One, two, three.
You know what's really sad is uh, just you get a brand new battery and bought it in the gun city council now the battery will charge.
It won't charge?
In hope it'll, it'll charge, but it won't hold a charge. The battery's too old. I think he's trying to tell me I've been in city council too long.
It's time to restart. We couldn't restart that, that year.
Outlast the technology.
You ready? Alright, let's get the show on the road. This is the city council regular meeting, Thursday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, five P M., Port Aransas City Hall. We'll do our call to order, item number one, and our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, the world around us has changed. Why has it been lost and upended? We talk of a new normal that will soon emerge. As we each embrace this changed world, some of us here today, he included, have probably at one time or another questioned your presence during it all. But we ask now for you to forgive us for those doubts and help us see that when we ask for strength, you gave us difficulties to make us strong. When we asked for wisdom, you gave us problems to solve. When we asked for prosperity, you gave us purpose and brains to use. When we asked for courage, you gave us fears to overcome. When we asked for patience, you gave us situations where we were forced to wait. When we asked for love, you gave us troubled people to help. Dear Lord, we received nothing we asked for or wanted, but we received everything we needed, and for this we give thanks. Amen.
Okay, item number three. It's a public hearing. The Port Aransas City Council will conduct a public hearing on the following. B C twenty-one dash two, three, three, two alley closure. Applicant is uh, is requesting, I think that should be to close an unused remainder portion of an alley directly behind east of their property located at seven, one, seven, ninth street. Portion is approximately two, two hundred feet long and runs from East Avenue G and dead ends just south of their rear property line. Applicant is Salt and Horns L L C, Mark Hicks, property location is seven, one, seven, ninth street. Anyone here to speak on that? Thank you. Citizen comments and reports?
You have a card?
Oh, I didn't have a card. Jimmy? Come on up.
Greetings to the city council and the mayor. Mr. Parsons, our manager, chief police, all the rest of y'all out there, all the rest of you plebs out there working for us. Uh, I just wanted to say this. It's a little history thing. In nineteen twenty-seven Calvin Coolidge was the President of the United States and he made a famous statement. He said, "The business of America is business." That was right before we went into the Great Depression. It turned out that focusing strictly on the success of business didn't work out so well. For a long time, a lot of people suffered, a lot of people lost a lot. And it wasn't just poor people that lost a lot, it was a lot of rich people lost a lot, a lot of people lost a lot of everything. What I'm saying is that I really wanted, I would really, really hope that everybody involved in the local government pays attention to the lesson of that. That I'm not against business. I am a dedicated capitalist, believe me, but when government uses everything that it can to help business, it doesn't necessarily do its job. There are considerations to be made other than acting, and I, and I certainly hope that no member of the council or any of the city employees feels like that they are here at the behest and to be of service strictly to business. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good point. Anyone else? Uh-oh, come on up. This is my friend here. Start the clock.
Yeah, Barney Foley, four ten East White uh, Avenue, Port Aransas. Someone's gonna read this. Concerning old town, the concept of an old town has been on the table numerous times.
Speak up a little bit more so we can hear you.
The concept of an old town area has been on the table numerous times. It has also been tabled that many times. I understand a discussion of the subject is on the agenda tonight. This could be the beginning of a process that produces a valuable addition to the resume of this city. Specifically, the act of creating an enclave in which the history and heritage of Port Aransas is no longer ignored and ceases to be snuffed down. Many detractors of the idea of an old town claim that there is virtually nothing to be preserved. They say it's time to abandon the allure of the previous Port Aransas and move on to the next incarnation. A modern, edgy, sophisticated, lucrative vibrating behemoth that takes advantage of the limited real estate in order to build a machine that practically prints money. In other words, they see this town as a piece of meat to be carved up. A better analogy may be that of a strip mine. If people gave us some thought, they would see that maintaining and building up an area of the past in a relatively, in a relatively small part of town would be a durable and sustainable segment of our economy. What we're facing right now is the destruction of a very desirable history in favor of a carnival atmosphere. I just want to ask a question, and I'm talking to everybody, not just to you guys, is uh, what is wrong with the idea of an old town? Why would uh, why would anybody be resistant to that?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I know you would.
Couldn't resist it.
I'm a, I'm a little bit worn out here, so I just, number one, Kathy. Well, I had surgery on both hands and I'm kinda, it's getting better for me, at least not wearing one on this one. Um, number one, uh, my name is Kathy Fulton and I'm at uh, six, one, nine East Avenue B. And um, I, I want to back up what Barney just said and what uh, Jimmy said too. And then the other thing I do want to say is that um, there are a couple of doom permits on here, and I don't, I didn't, I, I could only look at the numbers and then kinda look at the maps on one of them because it just wouldn't load properly. But the long and short is, is I, how, how many more dunes are we going to continue to allow? Critical dunes, I might add. These entities to tear down, ones for someone's drive because they just want to expand some more parking area and it's a large, it's actually, when I looked at the photos, it really, the photos speak more better than any of the other stuff. It's a, it's a lot of doom to permit to quote be mitigated somewhere else, but what's it gonna do right there between the structures that are already there? Just seems, it's a lot of doom, and the same is true for the Simmons Shore one. It just, I mean, they're just gonna flatten what is left there and just feel wish they'd uh, you know, it looks like that one, maybe those two sections, maybe they could just build around them and kind of leave the few little bit there. It seems like we're allowing way too much doom destruction, even though yeah, there's mitigation proposed, but I think it's, it's tearing the landscapes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any more citizen comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Item A. Environments. The second reading, amending chapter twenty-seven, public beach, Oracle Two Beach Camping. By deleting section twenty-seven dash fifty recreational vehicles camping permit required. Permit fees established in its entirety. Amending section twenty-seven dash fifty-two camping pro-prohibitions to define recreational vehicle parking and performing general housekeeping and providing for seven reading penalty and effective date. Would like to speak on that.
Most of us people are consenting agenda, sir, and I make a motion to approve consent agenda as stated.
Okay, I second it. All the row.
We have some holes.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Kruger.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Mayor B. Young.
Yes.
Okay. Items for consideration is item six. Item B is a general discussion with Fire Chief Nathan Kelly on a city red striping program and business occupation regulations.
Hi, Mayor. Uh, we were very fortunate, uh, the ability to have the fire marshal services or what I kind of call opportunistic and uh, you know, just is, is there is those people are available and coming in and out of our lives, but uh, met Nathan a while back. Uh, he has a, a great resume, which I probably should have put together, just suffice it to say, uh, he is a credentialed state fire marshal. He carries a gun and can arrest, uh, keep that in mind. Um, but uh, we talked him into, although he's the, uh, he's now the current fire chief in Aransas Pass with that responsibility, he's still uh, with their generous allowance, uh, uh, serves us on a contract basis as our fire marshal in that capacity and he helps uh, my department development services significantly and has brought a whole new level uh, to what we can do with his reviews, uh, with his expertise, but uh, I think there was a, a request to talk specifically about an issue that he and I have been talking about for a year and actually we go around and, and look at, but I'll let him kind of elaborate and, and answer your question regarding uh, red striping, uh, and I think really that's uh, red striping and occupancy and those kind of things. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Let's, let's start with red striping before we get to occupancy, so we're not bouncing around too much. And some of the occupancy topics, Nathan, that we wanted to address were, were um, how do cities or what is the, what's the best way for cities to go about? You know, we have all these multifamily developments where there it's a cud or a condo. You know, what is the best process for the city to get on a, like a reoccurring program to where we're monitoring, you know, the red striping that's required around the city year after year? So let's, let's start with that and we'll just keep, keep rolling.
Sure. So just want to make sure that the fire chief, y'all have a fire chief. I'm just your fire marshal. So, uh, and I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Uh, as far as the red striping goes, that, that is all controlled by what the fire code says. The fire code explains how it's put in. Um, what it's supposed to look like. Uh, I created a document that can be given out to um, developers when they're, when they're building uh, for red stripes, and there are some places that you wouldn't normally have a red stripe and some places that you will have a red stripe. Uh, as far as keeping up with, uh, are the red stripes being maintained? As we're doing uh, inspections, if the red stripe is already there on something existing, uh, but it has uh, you know, worn away, faded, is not correct, then that's when we do, uh, we bring that up on the inspection form and give them time to get that repainted. We haven't done a lot of stuff with things that were existing, what, what they call in the business as existing non-conforming, unless there's a push to make that happen. Uh, so a lot of the, uh, but if they have it or they went through a C O O process, a lot of places in town went through a, uh, you know, a rebuild, we had them put the fire lanes in. So. Sure, as a plans, as a plans come to me, I, that's one of the things I look at is uh, street widths, because that's the most important thing. When you look at the definition of what uh, it's actually called, uh, in the book, it's not called a fire lane specifically, it's called a fire apparatus access road. That fire apparatus access road starts as soon as the fire truck rolls out. That's the city street, so like you can't block off streets because you need that fire apparatus access road. Um, so I think it's uh, when you're looking at the uh, at the different uh, plans that we get in, that's one of the first things I look at. Do we have enough street width to put a fire truck through there? Um, and it's not just putting a fire truck through there, the whole purpose of the fire lanes was to be able to have two trucks pass each other or two trucks sit next to each other. And to be able to drop the hose down the, the way they do.
Is there certain size street width?
So, street width uh, is, can be different depending upon, um, but the, the, what it says, uh, the fire apparatus access road should, is a twenty-foot unimpeded access road, except for gates that are approved by the fire marshal or fire chief that can.
So twenty foot is a minimum then?
That's a minimum that, and that's no, nobody parking, that's exclusive of shoulders and all that. Twenty foot, I need for two fire trucks to pass.
And normally people are parked on both sides of the street, so you have to have twenty foot plus.
Those two cars.
No, that's not on a, no, on a twenty-eight foot back to back, it's different. That's correct. So your typical city street that is, let me, let me pull one up. So like it, like for example, if you look at um, like I was just in Pirates Bay. So for, for example, in Pirates Bay, and I was just looking at this as an example, like, for example, this is missing a red stripe. Okay, that's what, yeah. Right? So there needs to be a red stripe over on this other line also. Um, delineating that, that, because right now if someone parks on this, on the left side of that image.
The truck can't get in.
Truck can't get in there. So really that one needs a, that one needs a double, but let me, let me get to a city street, Joan, to answer your question.
Did I misunderstand what she was asking?
Yeah, so like on a regular city street in Port Aransas, like, like for example, Station Street. So when you come down to Station Street, let me just zoom in on here, this should be twenty-eight foot back to back. Now, so if I measure from back a curb to back a curb, that's right at about twenty, it's, 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 it's a rolled curb. So, yeah, right at twenty-eight feet. Now, if you have, Joan, if you have a a seven-foot wide truck parked right here and you have another seven-foot wide truck parked here, so that's, let's say you have fourteen feet of vehicle. So now you're down to fourteen feet down the middle. That is not a violation of the twenty foot. That is not. No, because this public street with a twenty-eight foot back to back is not a fire apparatus road per se. Um, otherwise you'd have to have, otherwise every road in town would have to be thirty-two foot, thirty-two foot wide.
Or only park on one side.
Or only park on one side. So you know, every street in Port Aransas, aside from Avenue C, Alister G, and Eleventh is a twenty-eight foot back to back. So what we're, what we're talking about here is like, for example, like when you go down Eleventh Street and you go into a lot of these, when you go into a lot of these cuds, for example, something like this, um, this product here that's off of, off of, off of Station Street, you have to have um, this twenty-foot access road that goes all the way back. And I'm sorry for my crooked line, but something like this, this is where that, it's pretty important that we keep a red stripe program to uh, you know, that we're going back and checking on these things year after year to make sure that, that that's red striped, because that's where you get you know, tourist parking, if there's not a red stripe in there, you're gonna have tourist parking in that area.
Do you have red stripe both sides?
Yes.
So, do you have a definitive plan to go through and?
So like for that one there, see that? There's no red stripe in there.
So. So to consistently go through the city and check every?
So I, we don't, because uh, we primarily only handle your commercial and new builds. Uh, when I, uh, when I say we, I say me.
Okay. So that would fall.
We, we primarily only look at commercial and new builds and then whatever the city requests of us.
So then that would fall back on where can the building?
Yeah, so we need to develop something where we're.
With Nathan's, I mean, I, I drag him along with me because his authority and, and credentials carry it more weight, so when I, we got the developer saying, like if it's done, I can do it under the, under his signature.
Or we have to go to like, in this instance, we have to go to this HOA and say, hey, you guys never put in your required red striping. It's still, it's still a requirement because you have to keep it updated. So even though you might not have, maybe you got around it when you first built eight years ago, doesn't mean you're uh, in perpetuity, you get a hall pass, so.
What, what's the penalties if, you know, as far as you go, Nathan, um, if someone chooses not to, you know, follow through and red stripe?
So it's, it's actually, there, I mean, there's two ways to go about it, but it really goes back to P D for writing the citation. I, I don't have any citation.
But you have a gun.
Yeah.
I think that's government coercion.
Rick, would that go to, for example, like in that one there, we would write the HOA and say?
If they push back, it's a fire code violation, so we start.
It would just be code enforcement, right?
We started on citation, building violation, and then, then depending on how it escalates, ultimately like gets involved and, you know, and sue them and it gets real bad, but usually it.
It doesn't go that far.
We've, we've been.
Because we did, we put them on notice, it, should something happen, and they're on notice and haven't gotten it done?
Yeah, they're.
They've got some significant.
Liabilities.
We have, we have been.
Can we before, just say somebody builds one in the future and before they can move in, they have to get all that?
Well, we're good about it now. We started a couple of years ago doing the red striping program. We made it part of the review process, but it's, it's, it's a lot of the ones, I mean, even the old, old ones, um, um, that we need to go back and, and get everyone on the same page to where we, we have a citywide program in place that every couple of years, we're out in the field and reviewing to keep everyone's red stripe.
Right.
Intact.
You're our first fire marshal, correct?
Uh, y'all, y'all had, yeah, in the past. Now, I, I can say that uh, I, I came, you guys hired me like right before the hurricane.
Right.
And then, you know, I picked up after the hurricane and since that time, we have been very fortunate to be able to just talk to the person, educate them on why we need stuff, and they do it. We've had very little pushback on people, just I'm not, not gonna do it. And the whole time I've, I've been there, I've never had to involve the police department or anything like that, so. Most folks want to do the right thing.
Oh, yeah, no.
It also opens up to liability, because like for example, you have a fire exit and you block it and you know, something happens in your, your business or wherever. Yeah, and, and you get people, they're not gonna sue you because they probably perish, but their relatives are gonna sue you in the ground.
Sure.
How is red striping physically done? Do I go red strip it myself as your official?
There is, there's, there's multiple, I mean, you can paint it yourself. Uh, I always suggest hiring a contractor to do it. They have the little machine that makes it nice and straight. Most of the people that work here now, the contractors that work here now, have been handed that piece of paper that tells them how to build it, uh, how, how we require it to be built, and they build it to our, our standards and it's the, 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 it's, it's called the fire lane information sheet. And anybody that requests it can come up here and get it, and then it, it tells them what it's supposed to look like, how it's supposed to be painted, what size letters.
Along, it's not just a red curve, there's some sizzling.
Right.
It identifies it as a fire lane.
So it's a, it's a six-inch stripe, four-inch letters, uh, I think it's a one-inch stroke. It tells it very specifically. Uh, no parking, fire lane, and then you end from there, twelve feet later, no parking, fire lane. But I believe even in, I believe in the state code, in the, in the state laws of the, for traffic, it says it doesn't even matter if it's painted right or wrong, if it's a fire lane and you park in it, it's enforced. So even if they just had a red stripe and it was a fire lane, then that, that, that was good enough.
Dave, what about, do we have some streets that are twenty-foot line?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have like, for example, Brown Street, which is an old, um, Brown Street's actually an alley. Um, that was, that was converted. Let me pull it up here. So Brown Street, you know, in between Station and, and um, and Alister. It's, it's an old alley and it's probably, it probably has about, it, the asphalt on that guy is eighteen, twenty feet tops. So something like that, you know, um.
So do we?
That would be a city street that we might want to discuss red striping the whole thing. Both sides, because if you ever started having, um, now granted, you can, you can get to it in two directions. That's the, that's the dangerous part is like in a lot of the cuds, there's only one way to get in, and if it's blocked, it's blocked. At least on Brown, you can, if you had a, a fire in the middle, you know, if you had a fire in the middle somewhere and you had blockage, you know, down on this end, at least you have an alternate way to come back around the other way and get to the fire, so you know, you, you have two ways to get to it, so that one's not as bad. It's the, it's the one-way dead end stuff that's, that really poses the problem.
I think we definitely need to look into any of those streets then that.
And fire lanes can be enforced, not just with striping, there are provisions in the code for uh, putting signage up. Uh, and I mean, everyone has probably seen, you know, no parking, fire lane signs, and you can also do that. And, and it, that is also in that packet, if you wanted, if they wanted to do a sign, it shows them how the sign's supposed to look and everything.
So like, I was gonna say, Dave, can you go back to the, I don't know if it was the very first one, I think you showed us, where, or the one off Station Street?
Oh, the Townhome Project?
Yes.
Yeah. That one?
Uh, yeah, so, no, the second one, I'm sorry.
Oh, the cud?
The cud, yes. Peakhead's off station, I don't remember where.
Yeah, it was off station right here.
Yeah. Okay, so just for clarification, you would put a red stripe where, where the head in parking is, correct? But you could get away with putting signs on each house saying, "No parking."
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't in that case. I would, I would try to keep the signage for uh, public streets, so.
Yeah, that, yeah, I agree. That one there, you really want a red stripe.
Okay, well, I was just curious, you said that you can do signs, I always just didn't know if that was a.
The code allows for that, but. The code allows for that, but.
But it'd be more, more consistent for the red stripe.
That's correct.
Got it.
Yeah, signage is something you would see more on a public street. And I, and I'll tell you, I, I've been in the fire service since, uh, nineteen ninety-one. All fire departments, all cities have had to deal with small roads. I mean, it's some, you know, I worked in a town that was built in eighteen eighties, you know, and it just. They got small roads, they had, you know, little fire hydrants, you know, still had wooden mains and stuff like that, you know? And so, I mean, th- this is an issue that we've dealt with for years and years and trucks just keep getting bigger and bigger. The, the new ladder truck they have now, you know, and just like the ladder truck we have in AP. It's tough to get down these streets, but it does, you know? And the other thing that, that fire lanes are really designed for, I don't know if you ever looked at the back of an animal, it's how wide those are. It's about the same as a fire truck, so they, they need a little extra room going through there too.
Nathan has a little bit different eye on things that, that, that. We necessarily do just as a fire, fire chief, so I'll simply ask him as he's out and around doing other inspections. That he just starts to, just starts to take note. You know, he'll, he'll see things that we drive by probably twice a day that we don't notice, so he can start, start getting a handle on.
Rick, didn't Village Walk go in on their own and do all their red striping? Because they were having.
Village Walk was one of the first that did that, and they, they took control of their own parking.
Yeah, they were having problems with parking and their solution was red stripe it and it eliminated people from plugging up the streets. And it's, well, it should have been red striped to begin with, but they came to us and said, hey, can we, how can we sign it? And we said, and after talking with them. You know, we said, hey, you really need to red stripe this thing and that'll eliminate all of it, and they went in and red striped it. So, I mean, it's, 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 it's a good way to get rid of a lot of the.
We just, we gotta stay vigilant, because the effectiveness of the HOA depends on who's elected. You know, somebody comes in there, it's a, a pet project for them, the next group. Out of sight, out of mind, and, and then here we go, years later, it fades and it's gone.
So, you look at like all, any CUDs, NUDs, PUDs, and you sign off on them for street width and. Red striping all this stuff. Do you do the final inspection or does, is that building department?
We do, we do a fire final. The building department also does a fire. They do a building final.
So you measure the street, make sure it's met, you know?
Yeah, and, I mean, they put on plans, it's, it's usually right on.
Okay.
It does look like there's a few things the city might have to start.
Yeah, we, like, like, uh, like we said, we really started being a lot more vigilant and requiring the red striping plan. As one of their construction sheets, whereas in the past, we hadn't done that. And that's helped, but we, we need to get on a, a retro plan to where we're, we're going back and getting, picking up the ones that.
Right.
You know, that are older than five years that didn't, that never red striped in the first place.
Right.
And it's a cost, but you know, it's, it's something that we gotta do, otherwise we're, we can't get our fire trucks in there and, and respond to a fire.
And ambulances.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that gonna apply to, I mean, cinnamon shore and tomato?
Everybody.
Streets for everybody.
Everybody.
You don't get a pass on fire.
Yeah, I mean, if you're a PUD and you have sub twenty-eight, you know, if you have twenty-four-foot streets, you should be red striped on one side of the street. Yeah.
I didn't know that that was their streets.
Yeah, so that's something that's, that's in our, in our sights.
We have proven some of those in, uh, maybe that one just a couple of months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we've identified some things in there that they're gonna have to correct. We want to get past, I mean, it. It's practical to, to force it on it before Labor Day, but now that falls here, it's a good time for this to.
And this is something that our new code enforcement officer could be working on once he hires, you know, to, to. Do all that stuff then too.
Yeah, then you can just identify and say, hit, hit these guys.
Yeah, that, that's kind of the heart with me being a contractor to you guys, it's, it, that makes it kind of hard for me to be over here for cost of.
Right, no, I understand certain things, yeah.
Well, let's jump, you wanna jump onto the next topic, onto, um, yeah, occupancy. Um, Nathan, some of the, some of the council members came to me and said, hey, how do we, how do we determine occupancy for? Like, for example, I won't, I won't use any names, but let's, let's just say we wanted to look at a nightclub. What is, what is the process of, for the city, you know, to determine? You know, we, let, let's say we know what the occupancy load is for a certain building and it's twelve-thirty at night, how do, you know, what is, what is the typical process? Who, who does it for a city and how do, how do you accomplish it? So, uh, in parts, part areas I've worked at, uh, what we've done, and I have had to do this before, go in, we actually go in, in uniform. We kind of go in and get a general layout. If it looks overcrowded, we've actually. Okay, you know, grab the manager, the owner, whoever, shut it down and actually with a clicker, click everybody out. It's very disruptive to the business. Most people don't go back in, you know, that kind of thing, but if you're having a true problem, that's the best way to do it. Uh, as far as setting the occupancy, each occupancy depending upon its use, assembly, you know, business, mercantile, that kind of thing. Those, uh, that percentage changes back and forth. And so assembly with, uh, standing room only, I think is a point seven, I think it's like seven foot for every person or something like that, I can't remember. I'd have the, I got a, I got a spreadsheet that does it for me. And so I just click in the numbers, size of the building, I take out certain rooms, like, you know, the kitchen, the bathrooms. Usually behind the bar area, I don't, uh, count that, because that's not where the pub is gonna be. Come up with a square footage, times it, times my, you know, my formula that I have to time it, and then that makes that occupancy load. Once that occupancy load is set, which we have done, I think, two or three here, uh. Places that already existed and went back and, and, and put them back in, um.
Here in Port Aransas?
Here in Port Aransas, yeah, we've done a couple, a couple, I don't remember all of them we've done, but we, but I've never had to come back in. I've never been requested to come in and, and follow up on that occupancy load. I think we did some right around COVID. Chief, have you ever, have you guys ever like had occupancy issues or calls?
We have, um. And part of it is just determining that, it's just, you know, a lot of the bars and stuff, they have outdoor decks and all that accounts for occupancy. The inside, they can be shoulder to shoulder, and still be within their, their compliance, because nobody's on the decks.
Yeah, when I, when I, when I do my occupancy load, it's for the load of inside. Um, and the city kind of calculates, uh, a little different than I do. Mine is actually inside, because if they're outside. Then they're already outside the building.
Right.
Occupancy loads really for emergency egress, getting people out of a building once a fire happens, um. And even to this day, we've had serious fires, multiple deaths because of overloading, so. Um, it is very important to make sure those fire exits work and you're able to get the amount of people that are in the building out of the building. That's, that's what occupancy loads really for.
One, one thought we had was that if we're, if we identified high occupancy buildings, probably the ones we're all talking about. Is just require a doorman with a clicker and maybe subject at any point in time to produce that to the fire marshal. And he goes in there and if he doesn't buy it, then, I mean, having everybody exit for no reason, I don't think is probably prudent. But if there's, if they produce a, a hundred count on a clicker. And clearly knows that there's more than that in there, then I don't think it takes but one, one of those. Efforts, and it probably won't happen again, it might.
So, but that's something that you have to do, or?
It could be the police department, they, they can enforce any law that I can enforce, and they actually do it better than me, because they have the, they can.
Right.
Sign here.
So you have a place that's inside and out, so you're not counting for the people outside?
No, it's a fire or something.
Just for a fire, right.
Yeah, we only, we only, for, for fire code purposes, we're just trying to egress people outside the building.
Right.
Um, now, if they go into a trapped area where they have to go back through the building, yeah, that would be a problem. But I don't think that we have any places like that. I think they all can exit from the, from the decks if they need to.
Isn't that requirement to, everything has to have like a, a window or a secondary door? You can't have a one entrance and?
Uh, so, for a building, you can have a single egress if it's less than fifty people. So a regular door, just, well, that's a, a door like this, what they call a three-O door, um, that's good for forty-nine people. Uh, and then, so as you go up, uh, if they, if they went to, and that's forty-nine people including employees, so if they have ten employees, that means thirty-nine people.
Right.
Um, if, once they hit that fifty, then they have to go to a, a double door like this, and then we. Travel distance comes in more than seventy-five feet, now you have to have doors over here, that kind of thing. It, there, there's a, it's, it's, it's more complicated than it, than you would think it would be, but it's very laid out, set by engineer, fire protection engineers, and that's how it's done. Uh, the way it's written in the code, the code was, you know, written by experts around the world. It's the international fire code, so. Countries around the world use the same fire code that we're using, so it, it's written correctly.
Let me ask you, we have a number of residents in suburban town of businesses, you know, rental properties? Is it prudent to establish an occupancy limit for those rental properties? Is it legal to do that?
Like in, like a single-family dwelling type house? So, um, there's, it's been kind of crazy with that. And I'm fixing to go to the Fire Marshal's Conference and I'm gonna bring up a lot of information about this, talking to other people about it, but. I don't think there's anything in the fire code that specifically talks about what we would normally call like short-term rentals or that type of stuff. Single-family homes that you rent out, Airbnb and the VRBO or whatever it is, um, there's nothing really in the fire code about that. Fire code doesn't really kick in until you get to quadplex and above, unless it's a gross fire hazard. Um, but if you go stay in a hotel, none of those windows are open, you know?
But they also, most of them all have fire doors and everything.
Yeah, and you go out to stairwells, that's right.
Well, when we built our house, we had to have doors in all the bedrooms or windows that opened in your bedroom, is that, that's fire code, right?
Uh, yeah, and that's a, that's residential, so they're all gonna have that.
Rescue opening the wall with egress.
That, but that falls, that falls out of the fire code and into the residential code.
So I guess more of the, more of the question is, and this is just my take on this, so you can correct it if I'm wrong. So, talking about short-term rental, because it's, say, it's a two thousand square foot house and you have twenty people in there, that's not an occupancy violation, because those twenty people. Other than that they're all trapped in a room, they could have got out of the house, because it's not a high density, that's a very, still low density.
Well, and this is, this is where kind of, there's a, there's this huge gray area with this, because. The, the house was built under the residential code, wasn't, the fire code was never enacted on it. Um, if the city wanted to do something like that, we could probably, I could do some figuring and figure out what a house would be, but. There's, I don't believe there's anything in the fire code that talks about doing that with a sa- single-family dwelling. So fire code really just, it comes in once you get to a quadplex and above in residential. And then any of your commercial-style buildings, so quadplex and above would be, you know, quadplex, but mostly we deal with. Like condos, apartments, hotels, dorm rooms, that kind of stuff, like for schools. Uh, that's, that's where the fire code really kicks in, it's, it's.
But those are higher density type.
I'm sorry?
Those are higher density type, uh, environments, so.
That's correct, yeah, um, but I'm, I'm sure that there's. Uh, and I, I, I'm not familiar with residential code, because I've never had to enforce it, but there's gotta be, it says something, says you can't have a bed inside of a laundry room, you see what I'm saying?
Well, I think our code, our code has that.
Right.
What's that?
I think our code has that.
Yeah, and so, I mean, there, there are certain rules that can be in place by city ordinance. But not necessarily comes out of the fire code, but can use fire code to build that city ordinance. I mean, like, if you were to go rent a hotel, I don't think they'll allow you to put twenty people in one room, you know what I'm saying?
Nice one.
But, uh, and I'm not even sure that comes out of the fire code either, it's. Uh, I don't know of anything in the fire code that says that.
Anything else similar?
I would, I'd be happy to help you guys, you know, wh- what I've done for you guys, I've, I've, I've got inspectors that work for me. We're happy to force the things that you want to enforce, as long as, you know, of course, it's within the law, but.
Right.
We're happy to come in and help you guys, whatever programs you guys want to start.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, item C is an ordinance, first reading, finding that alley closing request, VC twenty-one. Twenty-three, twenty, uh, thirty-two, being a twenty-foot wide and three hundred and thirty-five foot long. Unimproved portion of, uh, alleyway southeast of seven seventeen, Ninth Street and extending north to Avenue G. Aransas Holding Company, uh, SDC, block sixty-seven, lot three R. Is not necessary for public use as a thoroughfare, providing the vacation. Abandonment, enclosure of the alleyway, and releasing any and all public rights, title, and interest.
Thank you, Mayor Council, and, uh, David has the, uh, kind of on the big screen what you have in your, in your documents. Again, this is one of probably a handful of, of actual alleys that, for all practical purposes, has really. Not been an alley in a long, long time. Uh, there's a fence that blocks it, um, it just exists, um. On the record is a platted alley, so it, um, it probably, uh. It probably does make sense, uh, to get that closed and back on the tax rolls. Um, so really, it's, it's very straightforward, that's what you're looking at is what's proposed. Uh, again, as always, any, any closing like this does require that, uh, the applicant, uh. Should you approve that, does require the applicant to finalize and effectively make that approval valid, uh, replat it into their property. Uh, so that is one of the, always one of the conditions. Um, so that's it, uh, planning and zoning saw it, uh, felt, felt, uh, uh, agreed with staff's recommendation that it. Really no longer had any value for, for any purpose. Pedestrian, uh, drainage, any use and, um, so approved.
Sure.
Vacation.
Just a question.
Sure.
That, the black thing that's like, it's already half in their alley, is that, what is that? Is that a dumpster or is it?
Where? That thing right there?
No, to your left, that thing right there.
Oh, that thing there?
What is that?
I think that's storage of something.
The golf carts?
Uh, let me see if I can see them.
Because it's on this one here as well. I just was curious, because it looks like someone's already using that part of the property, and I, I mean, which is fine, I just didn't.
Yeah, there, it looks like their cart's back in there, but, so the alley is like, if you, if you look right down this line right there, there's the alley. Goes right down this, um. Right down this, this line right there, right in between these two palms, then back towards that fence.
So, when we split that, half us can go to, uh, was it?
Yeah, half and half, it goes to each owner.
Half goes to Jake, ZTPA.
Right, the, the rule, the rule is, is it, uh, when vacated, it goes back from whence it came, so again, as, as, as you guys know. Sometimes when we plaid a property that hadn't been platted, we extract our, our roadway easements and rights away at that time. Uh, so just as happened at some point in the past, uh, it'll revert back to those plats that, uh, that it was taken from.
Make one boat, to Bojones, okay.
Want to hear a motion?
A motion to approve.
My second. Paul Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Prager?
Yep.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item D is discuss and take action to confirm that dune permit be, uh, FDP twenty-one. Sixteen fifty-nine is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. The proposed permit will allow the construction of a retaining wall and an exten- extended driveway. And a garage at an extended, uh, existing residence. Applicant is Kelly and Greg Morrison. Morgenson, property location is one four O Star Lane.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, and, uh, as we talk about this, I'll kind of refer you to the exhibits and the, and the applicants, the applicant. Applicants, engineers here too, and applicant, I am applicant, applicant, uh, here, he can, he can answer any technical questions, but. Uh, again, just as the permit application says, uh, they are looking to extend a driveway out of garage, retaining wall, which would impact critical dunes. Uh, but just to address, uh, uh, an earlier statement, let me, let me just be clear regardless of your decision on this, that. You know, when, when somebody goes to, uh, in request a dune permit, um, there's, there's two things that, that happen. One, they, they invariably hire a professional engineer, uh, that looks, uh, looks at the dune structure. In this case, it's an existing home, so there's not a lot to work with, uh, but they absolutely look at the critical dune structure. Uh, and they do work, uh, as best they can to minimize their impact on that, and I think Bruce, having sat on P and Z, has a little bit of an advantage. to minimize their impact on that, and I think Bruce, having sat on P and Z, has a little bit of an advantage, having seen a lot of these. Uh, but you look at the topographical maps, and that gives you, again, the more you look at these, the more you start to underst- or understand them, Joan has seen a lot of these as well. Uh, but quite frankly, it, it, and I, I can't think of an instance where you look at one of these, and, and absolutely, in this case, I think there's a hundred cubic yards of dune being impacted, uh, they're mitigating for a hundred and seven yards, uh, GLO, uh, in their own rules requires it a minimum of one-to-one compensation, but I, I guess my point is, is that oftentimes, it, it gives, it gives man an opportunity to go back in there and sometimes enhance a dune structure, hit a low point, uh, actually make it better and more robust than it was before. Um, like I said, so, I, 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 I again, I just don't want you to think that when we say that, that the dunes are being destroyed, that that, you know, and then, and then lightly we hear, well, mitigate it. Well, it's important, it's, it's an important, it's an important component, uh, it's probably the, the, the most key component to the whole thing, is that okay, if, if, you know, if you're going to impact a critical dune, why and how, uh, are you gonna make, make it better? And so, like I said, they, you know, these engineers do a good job, I think, at trying to demonstrate that to you, ultimately it's your decision, but uh, and then on top of that, another professional engineer, our engineer on our behalf, looks at it, compares that to the coastal management plan and the general land office's requirements, uh, and also helps us, uh, in, in making that determination, so
And then GLO looks at it.
And the GLO looks at it, uh, so I, I just, I, it just, it, it, it isn't a, a mass destruction of dunes, it's an impact, no question about it, but every, uh, at the very least, yellow requires a one-to-one compensation, this will get us a little bit more than that, uh, and there's compensation, so uh, including the vegetation, uh, that was on the previous dune, all that, all that's part of that, and you see it's part of the application, so uh, again, a little more complicated, so I just want to point it out, just, you know, to have all the facts out there.
I think it would be easier to say that, moving the dunes, or the sand from the west to the east and enhancing the dune, which would offer better protection, would be an easier way to say all of what you just said.
Right, probably, I tend to like to hear myself talk.
Okay.
But thank you for clarifying it, but, but, but again, I, yeah, you are, you are, you're more familiar with looking at these, I think you and Joan probably the best, but you're exactly right, so yeah, I, I think, and this, this is a good example of where they were able to do a little bit better than what Mother Nature had been doing with, with that pile, so.
Well, I have some questions for you. The, uh, GLO comments, um, on the second page, I'm on page forty-nine. It says the city must require the applicant to begin compensation, um, with commencement of construction. And if compensation is not completed prior to commencements of construction, the city must require that the applicant provide proof of financial responsibility in the amount equal to that necessary to complete it, so do all do that.
Yeah, well, so I'm very glad you asked that question. Because let me tell you what page twenty-six of our coastal management plan says. Because it's pretty important, and this is the problem we have with GLO sometimes. Uh, so what you just read may paraphrase, the city must require that the applicant provide proof. What our coastal management plan says, the city may big difference, may require that the applicant provide proof of financial, uh. They do this, in my opinion, intentionally sometimes.
That's the GLO lying to you in a document and changing words.
Page twenty-six, our coastal, you guys are welcome to take a look at it.
Our, our, our dune plan, Joan, is adopted in the state natural resource code, so you have a state employee changing language from state law, spinning it to make it a shall when it's not a shall, it's a may.
But regardless, let me answer your question, though, financial responsibility. So, we look at the applicant, and, and we have, we have a lot of tools, uh, first off, we have lean authority. So if they were to start this, not complete it, I could hire any one of our engineers to complete it, we lean the property. Only issue would be if the value of that property was less than what it costs us to mitigate. Well, clearly, we all know, that's not gonna be the issue.
I think we're safe there.
Yes, uh, and, 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 and let's just, to, to save time for the, a couple of the other dune permits, even the larger ones. So, when you look at a big developer, uh, again, if we didn't have experience with the developer, uh, and Dave and I have talked about this, if we didn't have experience with a Palmier or Cinnamon Shore, or knew who we were dealing with, absolutely, we'd, we'd go in and, and we'd, we'd investigate a little bit more to see if they had the, the wherewithal to carry through. We've not needed to, we know who we're dealing with, we know their, and we still have the same lean authority and can go finish it and, uh, and lean the property, so answer your question.
Okay, and another one, on page fifty. The city shall provide written notification to the GLO after determining that the mitigation and compensation is complete, and the GLO may conduct field inspection, do we do that?
Correct, uh, we actually have a whole list that we just got from GLO, ones that they want updates on. Uh, again, remember that, that mitigation, uh, they, they allow for up to three years to do it, and so the big developments probably take every bit of that. Sometimes don't get it done and have to do, uh, have to do another one. But yes, we do, we, we've not been terribly consistent in the past, uh, with that process, but we're better at it, uh, and, and as, as P and Z has recently directed this, uh, we now have a, a plan in place to where we ask the applicant engineer to go out and certify that it's been done. So that was a kind of a step that, that we finally, you know, kind of, uh, kind of got through, it actually, it was, uh, either the last meeting or the, where's my P and Z folks, the last meeting or the meeting before. Uh, but anyway, we, we, and we can do that procedurally, we felt we could do that procedurally within the context of our authority, so we're gonna have whoever the applicant engineer is, when it's done, uh, submit that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So probably then you sort of answered, uh, on mitigation procedures, four and six. Area will be inspected periodically after the mitigation instruction process, uh, has been completed. And then six says the mitigation site will be monitored and maintained until the vegetation cover uh, matches or exceeds the level of vegetation from the surrounding naturally formed dunes, so that's.
And, and, and Jim, all, all these are pretty much, rest of these are boilerplate uh, statements that they put in there, the big developments actually go out in, in, because of the magnitude of that, uh, they stake the critical dune areas, so they know where to avoid and, and, and as far as the monitoring, the smaller sites, we're able to do that just because with, with something like this, now there becomes a building permit, so we're out there anyway. We're out there anyway, we can keep an eye, if something is amiss, it becomes pretty apparent.
And that pertains to all the major ones.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Well, really, all of them.
All of them, you should, you should get exceptions for big or small.
Right.
Well, I guess I didn't see that kind of, um, all those details on that one, where they were putting the electric line down, um, underground.
Uh, and remember, that's, well, remember, that's a no dune permit.
Okay.
So there's no critical dunes being impacted, and.
They're just trenching.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. No, I'm glad, I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather get this out and, and just be transparent and open, and just, so everybody knows what's going, everybody knows what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Paul Rowe.
Councilmember Prager?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried.
Might as well stay up there, Rick.
Oh, I will, sir.
He is a discuss and take action to confirm that dune permit BFDP twenty-one eighteen thirty-nine is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. The proposed, uh, proposed permit pertains to beach ma- ma- maintenance, and it does not include the construction of any structure.
Thank you, Mayor.
And it's the city of Port Aransas, property location is Port Aransas City Beach.
City Beach, so e- even the city is not, doesn't escape the, the GLO's, uh, uh, authority for, for any activities within the, the thousand foot, so, uh, this is one that we renew every five years, uh, and, and again, it's, it's just as the name implies, it is for our beach maintenance, so this, this would allow, uh,
Three years.
I'm sorry, three years, um, uh, this allows for us to, to maintain the roads uh, in the event of a seaweed event, uh, if, if you'll notice on the documents, there are certain storage areas that are identified. Uh, that's important, because again, GLO looks at this, uh, uh, once you stick sand somewhere, if goat weed or sea oats or something starts growing on it, uh, they like to call it a dune, and all of a sudden, it hands off again, so we identify storage areas where, where we can move sand in and out. Uh, uh, we haven't done it in a while, but, but, uh, we utilize notching very successfully in years past, uh, especially with, with, uh, big seaweed events, where we would, uh, scrape it up, and we'd actually notch out dunes within these storage areas, pack this stuff in there, uh, and it, it very, very, uh, successfully, uh, deteriorated, uh, and, and, uh, you know, again, part of the, the, the dune system, so, uh, it allows us to move it in and out, and that's why those storage areas are important. Uh, that's really the nature of this permit, uh, again, just as a, a side note, I think there's a reference there, we also, uh, we also are obligated to obtain an Army Corps of Engineers permit, uh, for the low side, low beach, uh, the, the wet section of the beach from, uh, mean high tide back to the water.
I have a question for it, in the back one, it says, um, specifically, uh, current proposed, they are not currently proposing back stacking, and says therefore these activities are authorized, so backstacking is where we used to put seaweed behind the main ridge line, is that correct?
That is correct, and.
And so are we, are we just not doing that anymore?
Steven, did we modify, didn't we?
Yeah, we, we.
We modified.
We, yeah.
The backstacking behind the seaweed.
Right, right, so.
Behind the what?
Seaweed, the most seaweeded.
But this one, it says that this permit doesn't let us backstack, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, we, we've stopped backstacking, um, if, if you look at like this image right here, this is over off of, uh, dunes, is that dunes, uh, sea breeze, so you, you can kind of tell from this aerial image, this was an area right in here that we backstacked, um, probably in two thousand twelve, thirteen, maybe fourteen, but we would drive up, up through the dunes, and we would hit these low areas that were pre-approved through, uh, through a, a, a general land office dune permit. What we do now, that we have, what we found is more successful, is what we call front notching, and it's where we go in here and we, we, we go back forty, we're allowed to go back forty feet, and we take, like, maybe a two-hundred-foot section, and we take all that sand, and through our, uh, uh, Corps of Engineers permit, we can put that sand at the water's edge, and then when we have the big seaweed events, we come back in here, and we put the seaweed and sand that we collect off the beach, and we put it back in that area, and after about a year or so, it's, that's, that seaweed's broken down, and actually, in about two years, that site can be recycled and used again, so it's, it's kind of a homespun beach nourishment, where, you know, we, we take sand, uh, put it at the water's edge, and it, it, it opens up that spot. Um, you know, and then we can, this permit allows, if you go up and down the beach, you'll notice that this permit um, has multiple front notching, um, areas, you know, throughout town.
So there are some very specific areas.
Yes, it's, it's, it, yeah, so in that permit, you know, you'll, you'll find like this area here in front of Dolphin Lane, that's one of the notch areas. Um, we, we try to keep away from roads and dune walkovers, so it's kind of segmented, but that's the that's what this, this permit allows us to do is, is, uh, we call this, this first forty feet, the maintenance dune, because we've really art, we, it, it's very artificial, uh, I mean, we, we've us and Mother Nature have built that dune, you know, more Mother Nature than us, but we've, we in years past, we used to what was called front stack, and that was where we would just take a front in loader, go grab a load of seaweed and just dump it right on the face of the dune. And we did that for so many years, what was happening was, the, the roadway, the dune line was building out into the roadway so much that you know, if, if, if we were in a, in a eroding zone from the, from the golf course south, you know, the beach is eroding and we were front stacking so much, um, that, you know, you can see it in this image here. You s- noted, noticed this big, um, this, this big kink right here in, in the beach, that was from prior to the golf course, like in two thousand and five to, to about two thousand and nine, we would take all the seaweed and just go stack it in front of, uh, in front of where the golf course wasn't. And so we, we built out rows and rows of, of, of these dunes, and tha- and that's that not, that's that kind of that difference in the beach width, but when we started doing it, um, we started doing it in town more, and we started building out the, the road so much, we were skinny in the beach. So we needed to come up with some ideas that would get this, that would keep the front toe of the dune in one spot and get the seaweed back behind it, so we started, we started the backfilling, and then we kind of filled in all the low areas, and then we started the front notching, and the front notching we found is definitely the best, the best way to deal with the, uh, with the seaweed, if, if, if that's the directive of council.
Didn't we stop backfilling because it was getting a lot of people complaining about the dunes getting too high and the smell?
Um, well, I mean, there was just no need anymore, you get, we got that anyway, the, I mean, it's, it's, um.
I was just curious.
You know, we, we came up with the front notching idea in twenty, uh, twenty, uh, twenty thirteen. Um, and if you'll, if you've noticed, twenty fourteen was our last
Big event.
Sargassum event, um, it's all propagating about a month and a half earlier now, and so these large sea, these large sargassum mats, instead of waiting to get into the gulf, you know, it would, you know, the, 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 the kind of the sargassum cycle, you know, is, it, it used to be that the, the sargassum would make its round, come around, come around the, uh, uh, the Yucatan, and it would start to, it would hit the gulf, and it would start to propagate around here, and those big mats would almost double in size, and they would hit us, but what's going on since twenty fifteen is that stuff is, is, you know, it's all coming from the Sargasso Sea, all those sea, and it's, it comes around, and it floats through, it does this, that's the, that's the sargassum track, and now that, now those, it's all propagating in this area, so it was blowing up like two months, it's blowing up a month early, and it's just hammering these, um, Belize and, and, and we haven't had, we haven't had decent sargassum mats since twenty fourteen, so it's really.
Thanks for thinking it.
Um, it's, it's really kind of an odd phenomena, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of the, the scientists are big time, they're having these big sargassum symposiums down in the Caribbean, we used to have that here in in Port Aransas, we were the host of the original sargassum symposium, and now that's all taking place down in the Caribbean, because they, you know, it's, it's temperatures, it's, it's fertilizers coming out of Venezuela and and getting in the Caribbean, it's a whole, it's, they're kind of trying to pinpoint it, but luckily, uh, we haven't frontnotched in five years, so, but that is the process that that we, uh, deploy, and it's, it's, it's the best one, um, it's the best one for us, we think.
And, and when you have some time, eh, of course, the GLO gets frustrated, because I always point out how robust and, and vibrant our dune system is, but, but for those that play with Google Earth, go up and down the Texas coast sometime and look at, really look at how, you know, they hate me saying that, usually I say that when they're picking on us, but, uh, it's really true, we, uh, our dunes, our dune structure is just so, so much more robust than, than most any, I think anyplace else in the coast.
Oh, I remember Galveston, that was.
Oh, yeah, Galveston got, you know, leveled.
Despite what you read or hear, I think we care more about it than a lot of other places.
So, that's it. Motion to approve.
My second. Paul Rowe.
Councilmember Prager?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
You have written holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Item F. Discuss and take action to confirm the dune permit BFDP twenty-one thirteen seventy-three is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. The proposed permit will include graded plots of land for future residential subdivisions and amenities. The proposed construction will impact critical dunes and includes mitigation for these, for those impacts. Applicant is Sea Oats Two LLC, property location is fifty-eight hundred Highway three sixty-one.
I'll introduce, but I got some questions. Sure, yeah, and I, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually ask Steven to come up here, he's here, um, and, and although this is just a little bit lar- actually, a much larger scale and scope, uh, all the same, same premises I spent so uh, such a lengthy time explaining, kind of still apply, uh, it's just on a little bit larger scale, but if you've got questions, uh, you should, I don't know, you or Harris, who the, you're the lucky one, let me let Stephen Skorarchik, uh, uh, with Urban Engineering, he, uh, he's the preparer and.
Are you the reviewer or are you the applicant?
In this case, I'm the applicant.
Okay.
So, just real quick, the, uh, Cinnamon Shore South, here's our city limits right here, La Mirage, city limits right there, you'll see, uh, of course, you'll see. You'll see, uh, of course you'll see the construction of Cinnamon Shore South. Now this was, this is the approved PUD. That you see disturbed. This, these were two Terramar tracks in the middle that they did not have ownership of. When the PUD got approved, the PUD and the original dune permits. So what you see now is they've purchased these two. Um, these two Terramar tracks that come down. There's two of them. They come, you know, from the highway, then they come all the way down to the, to the, uh, Mean High Water. So they purchased these two tracks and so the dune permit is for. You know, this area right in here. And so this dune permit will match this dune permit and that dune permit.
And, and, and before I break, Steven, just you asked, so he's the applicant, but the reviewing engineer, in this case it was Hanson. Did review and, and say it did comply with our coastal management.
I understand and that's not, that's not the question. Sure. Okay. So my question is, this one actually is further east than all the other applicants we've seen and they're using as a fire access. And I know that one of the big problems we've had with property that's on the, um, the east side is generally you get land, you get, um, sand. Fill. So since they're using the fire lane, are we worried about, I mean, how are we gonna maintain, make sure they maintain that fire lane? Because that's actually further east than most of them. I'm under. It's right here. It shows, shows fire access as, so. I'm sorry, I'm looking at page, I'm looking at page ninety-five out of our two twenty packet. It says fifteen thirty-one of the application. It is a, it is a blueprint. So.
And where does it say?
It says, uh, right here. So this right here says fire.
Oh, fire access.
Right. And so this is actually, they're, they're going further into the dunes than any other permit we've, we've approved. And it says fire access. And my question is traditionally those have, those have a big problem with sand fill or ingress. And I just know that those are generally not maintained very well. It's on the backside of the pool. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yes. So the condo and pool development requires the fire access.
Correct.
And. I mean. I don't think that maintenance there will be a problem. The, the proposed dune slopes behind that will allow for. Maintenance efforts to keep the, the dunes at bay.
Keep the dunes at bay?
If, that's not the right way to word it.
No.
Easy now.
So with the PUD, did they have to do everything new for that piece?
Yeah, yes.
Everything.
Yeah.
And let, let me say this about this tract, the, if you can, David, if you can pull up attachment number four. On the.
I can't. All I have is Google Earth.
Okay.
Attachment number four.
It's a page ninety-six.
Impacts and mitigation exhibit. The dunes in this, on these two Terramar tracks are more seaward. Than the surrounding areas and they're lower for the most part. There's a continuous portion of critical dunes going up and down the beach here. And the, the dunes range in height from. With, with a top elevation, they, for the most part, they have a top elevation that ranges in height from fourteen to. I think there's some thirties in this, in this area. Between the development and the beach. And in this area that they want to develop, that gets down as low as nine. So this dune permit takes some dunes which are pretty isolated. They're not connected to the dune system really. And it moves them into that area and expands the area of the critical dunes in the two Terramar tracks. It additionally raises the minimum elevation of the primary dune ridge to. I believe it's fourteen on this permit. So we're taking something that. In Cinnamon Shore has the highest probability of a, a problem. And raising it to an elevation which we feel there won't be any potential problem.
Okay. Now, the next thing I know is just, we had a semi of an issue. When we approved a big excavation and, and I want to say I was probably on P and Z at this time. Um, they came in with big bulldozers and, and leveled out like five or six tracks. And then they just left it and we had like blowing sand. What can we do to mitigate that this time? So you don't affect. A, the residents Gulf waters or whatever that RV park is and the current development that's going to be going on. To the, uh, to the south, Cinnamon Shore developments on surrounding it.
Yeah.
So because we're talking, we're not talking about like a yacht, a lot where we can split down some hay. We're talking about probably what, ten acres?
It's.
More than that?
More than that, I believe.
So.
And I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
But I mean, we can, we can come up with a plan to mitigate that.
I think that, that was a huge problem when, when they did the, the. Still big, still big sand pit there.
And I, I, I have the same question, but I just wasn't involved in that.
Well, I understand, but I just, you know, here's what's gonna happen is we say yes today and then six months from now, after that's been thing. We're gonna get a lot of people coming in here complaining, saying, how'd you approve that? Or why'd you approve that when they didn't have a mitigation plan or prevention in place?
I really think that's a separate issue.
To announce the request, if, if you choose to approve it, just ask for the plan. We, we learned from that other effort and the subsequent ones have had to do, hey. We don't, we'll make them take our mulch. Uh, we'll figure out some solution, but make it a condition of the. Make some bit of plan, uh, and implement it.
Okay. I mean, that, that's because that is going to be something that's gonna come up and it's not coming up now. It's gonna come up in six months or nine months down the road. When they haven't built on it and it's a big barren, barren.
So we can make that part of the.
Sure. Absolutely.
All right. I think we definitely need to.
Give staff the discretion to approve, but, but the, the.
A plan, a plan. And if you don't agree with the plan, then you send it back and they think, because I just know that that's gonna be an issue. In the future. So.
Cinnamon Shore is willing to participate in that. They don't want to have that, that problem on their site.
Understand.
Um, I guess additionally, we're, we're providing more dune volume and area than what we're impacting. On this permit and every permit that I put together, I make an effort to. Get the applicant to provide additional volume and area more than what's required.
In other words, I mentioned GLO requires a minimum of one to one, uh, compensation for every cubic yard you mitigate your cubic yard.
So. I want to go back to my first question though. So this fire access is the most eastward part. Can we require some type of retaining wall to make sure that doesn't get?
Just remember Bruce, this isn't a permitting, this.
But this is the fir, this is the furthest eastward of a plan that we've seen or that I've seen.
But they've got to bring a PUD to you to be approved.
Okay.
So this, this, this is a whole new PUD, not part of the other existing PUD.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know.
So we can then request that when they, when they bring the PUD to us, correct? They'll bring that to us. Okay.
Well, I may not be here when they bring it to you all, but so.
But I mean, that's. Okay. All about, again, a planned unit development is a blank slate. Everything that they can draw everything at you, you guys can. Right. Streets, lighting, everything is on the table.
Okay. Well then.
But it's a good catch. I, I get, I get what you're saying, but they, their obligation regardless, anybody's still to maintain that road.
Well, I understand.
Violation of our.
Sure. We just started a big discussion about fire and, or fire access and that seems kind of one of those situations that it's gonna be a problem down the road.
Mr.? Any more questions?
I'm gonna make a motion subject to approve on the condition that they come before the city with a approved mitigation to control blowing sand. Erosion control, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Call Rome.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item, uh. F.
The G.
G.
Discuss and take action to confirm that no dune permit BFDP twenty-one twenty-three sixty-nine. Consistent with the city's coastal management plan. Proposed permit will allow moving above ground electrical utilities to underground. Applicant with C and F, Wild Trust, ETA L, Al, Hunging Bloom. Property locations eight two five eight three three, Mayor, Mayor Mara, adjacent to Avenue G.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this should have been relatively simple, but it, uh. GLO tries to, to, to complicate it. Uh, again, it's, it was a pretty straightforward, no dune permit, no critical dunes being impacted. Uh, it was in the public right away and it's, it's clearly for the benefit of the applicant. But the benefit to us is that we've systematically, uh, tried to, to go underground with these utilities. So that we don't have poles and lines every opportunity. So it's, it, it, it's good for both.
Can I hit you with a question when you're done?
Okay, sure. So the, the complication, like I said, everything's straightforward up to the point where for the first time in, 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 in my almost decade here. That the GLO no longer would accept a Google Earth photo. Uh, even though we went out there and the conditions were exactly the same, they said no. So. I sent, uh, I sent my assistant Nicole out there to take current photos. Uh, of that pole you're looking at, the conditions were essentially the exactly the same, no critical dunes. And the GLO didn't like her photos. So as it stands now, we're, we're in a, we're in a photo. Uh, battle. Uh, they also completely irrespective of no language to the, to, to the. Fact of how the photos are to be delivered, didn't like the fact the photo appeared, although it wasn't, to be taken from a car. Uh, so I'm just telling you that, just to show you that what we deal with sometimes. Uh, no. So, uh, so right now, I, I told them that I was going to, for full transparency, mention this to council. Uh, but we've inspected the site. There are no critical dunes. I, I, I tried to tell them that, that our assertion alone should carry some weight. Uh, that, that a creative angle of photography could certainly show no dunes if we were trying to deceive them. Uh, however, we weren't. So, uh, they still don't like the two photos. Uh, so for full transparency. More photos.
Well, just tell them to come down.
Well, so, so the project, just so you know, it's to get that pole. Remove the poles, pole, to, to get those, that line underground. Doesn't it go to the third pole, Rick? Uh, I believe it is.
That's, that was my question because if they're only taking the two poles, which is what I thought I read.
Yeah, two, it, it, yeah, it goes under, uh, the, these two spans go underground, Bruce. That span. And that span right there, that pole, that, that third pole remains, doesn't it, Rick?
Yes. Okay. So would it be in the city's best interest, since we are trying to remove poles to, since they're already got a permit? Just add a little more and maybe even it has to be in the city dime to sub, uh, to remove that third pole?
Well, then you would go all the way back to that fourth one. It just gets really expensive.
Yeah. Well, I just don't know if you can go any further because it looks like it's pulling power from across.
Yeah, it's pulling from, yeah. Once you go to that third pole, it creates too many problems. We, we, we can't force applicants. So this is again, one of those opportunities to where.
Like if, if we're building a street and we want to get a thoroughfare, we pay for the extra twenty feet of the street to, to get it. Is, it was, that was, that was my question. But if we're pulling power across the street, then we're not gonna be able to bury that line.
But we still get rid of, but we still get rid of those.
Right. I agree.
All right. So again, no critical dunes being impacted. So it's, again, this is a self-imposed process that, that we got ourselves into with our. Our previous coastal management plan where we would have to go to GLO. Nowhere in state law or the natural resource code does it require us to do anything if we're not impacting critical dunes. So.
Just a question also, didn't we approve one of these, I would say about two years ago, somewhere else on the beach?
And it was this one, wasn't it? It was out front there, wasn't it?
Well, because it was a trench, it wasn't even, they didn't have to mitigate just because it was gonna be, they're gonna pull up the sand, put the conduit down. And cover it back up and that was not even.
Right. It did require dune permit, but it was a temporary impact.
Right.
Uh, so there was no mitigation. They, 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 they went in there dug and then had to ensure that it was restored. But even then they had to get a dune permit. You know, but in this case, like I said, there's no critical dunes in the first place to even temporarily impact. So. Anyway, that's, it, it, like I said, pretty straightforward. Planning and zoning approved, uh, reviewing engineer found, uh, well, we did actually, uh. No dunes, don't go to a reviewing engineer. So.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. All Rome.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I think with that.
Quick break.
Thank you all.
Five minutes. And if you're not back in five minutes, you're shot.
Hey, if two of us aren't back in five minutes, that's not our forum.
Yeah, we're back, we're ready.
One, two, three, four, five.
Back in session. Item H. H was a resolution proposal for urban engineering requests for fee schedule adjustments. Entering into a master engineering agreement with urban engineering for city-owned properties damaged by Hurricane Harvey. Setting terms, conditions, and fees, and authorized city manager said to sign said documents.
So this, what you have before you, counsel, this is the, in 2018, April of 2018, the city approved and selected Urban Engineering as the city's FEMA engineering services. This, what he's requesting here is a three percent increase in his current, so his contract's up, this is a three-year contract. He's requesting a, what would amount to a nine percent bump, which would be three percent from 2018, 2019, and 2020. So that's what you have before you now. So it's a two-piece, two-piece resolution. One would be to extend the contract for another three-year, three-year contract at a at a three percent annual rate increase going back to 2018.
Going back.
I mean, not retroactively paying him, but bumping up his.
You said FEMA allows that.
His, yes, they would.
It says FEMA allows three percent, or we're talking about nine percent. It says a, what is it, most cases, urban revised hourly rates at less than. But without actually having last year's fee schedule, how do we know he did it? Or can we just say they get a nine percent boost from 2018 schedule?
Yeah.
And then is it, is this fee schedule negotiable, or is that just, how do we work that?
Not to exceed nine percent.
Yeah, you could just say that the schedule's not to exceed nine percent for any category.
Right.
For any of the.
They make enough money as it is.
Well, he wants to make nine percent more, sir. He wants to make nine percent more.
We don't have to give him that.
Well, I think that.
If he doesn't like it, then we'll get somebody else.
I mean, it is, but we did give our city staff seven percent increase this year in budget, so, I mean.
Well, that's city staff.
Well, I know, but I think.
This is giving it to a company that's filthy rich.
Well, I mean, I don't know if he's filthy rich.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
You promise? Maybe the people that work for him aren't filthy rich.
I mean, I don't know, it's the same thing that you can say we don't want to give the city or any other thing a pay raise, but then they're having a hard time. No, I'm not, but the same thing, the same thing like the trash people. They can't get people to work because of whatever rate they're paying, so I understand that, you know, people don't work for free, sir.
Well, they don't have to increase their rates all the time just because they want to increase their rates.
Well, this is covered by FEMA allowances, so I think as long as we keep it at nine percent.
So this is strictly for FEMA, though?
Yeah, this is the FEMA.
No other projects.
No, this is the FEMA contract.
So I think we ought to have the new three-year contract agreement not to exceed nine percent in any of these categories of schedule, that he has schedule of rates.
I agree with that. And I said, I don't know what last year's were, so we'd have to just look at the or the 2018 schedule and make sure they don't see nine percent.
Well, that's your job.
Yeah, we would do that.
Okay.
Because then he negotiates, right?
Okay. Are you?
Motion?
I make a motion to approve urban engineering and also a motion to approve their fee schedule, but limit it to a nine percent for all categories.
Not to exceed.
Not to see, not to see nine percent.
Second.
Paul Rowe?
Councilmember Crigger?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
No.
Maybria?
Yes.
Maybria?
No. Item I. General discussion on design, engineering, and funding for the construction of Beach Access Road B. Where has that got to be?
You bring up your wonderful Google Maps.
Yep.
So everyone knows where we're talking about.
Well, let's, I want to revisit that. So that motion fails, correct?
No.
Yes, because it's three to two.
It's three to a failure?
It wasn't tied, it was three.
Yeah, so.
So what's a quorum then?
Four people have to say yes.
Even though we don't have everybody.
Right, so we're going to have to bring that back, otherwise we don't have a FEMA engineer.
Well, do you want to break that into separate motions, or we just do it next month?
Well.
Well, I think you need to address it now.
Okay, so you want to.
Split it up or do something.
So Mayor, do you, or Mr. Parks, are you opposed to urban, or are you opposed to fee?
The fee, let me just say.
Okay.
I think it's a little excessive.
The fee, I'm opposed to, I'm not opposed to Jim, I'm opposed to the fee.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so I am going to, let's stick on H, and then I'm going to amend my motion. Motion one is going to be that we renew Jim Urban's master engineering agreement with the city of Port Angeles.
Second.
Okay, Paul Rowe?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crigger?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Maybria?
Yes.
Maybria?
Yes.
Okay, second motion is to agree to a pay increase not to exceed nine percent for any category to urban engineering.
I'll second.
Paul Rowe?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crigger?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
No.
Maybria?
Yes.
Maybria?
No.
Okay, item I. Is a general discussion of design, engineering, and funding for construction of Beach Access Road B.
Form CEO has been pushing for this one so hard and misses it.
Where is that going to be, David?
Okay, so Beach Access Road B. Right here, okay, so here's Highway 361, Cinnamon Shore North. And the city owns a fee simple forty-foot easement, right-of-way easement, right on this south border. Right, right there.
You can't do straight lines.
I know, I can't, sorry. Right there, so that's our, that's the city's, that's Access Road B. It's been in the Summers Goals workshop, I think, for the like, about the last eight years, we always mention it. It always never really rises to the top for funding.
I think the major issue is here is to approve it because of health and safety.
Yeah, it's always a life, I mean, that's always been our big.
I mean, we're having more and more issues every year with how crowded the beaches are and getting EMS to the beach quicker.
Here is, and the problem is, is that's a Region Two capital improvement project. And I looked at the thing, and we only have twenty thousand dollars worth of impact fees in there.
So what we can do.
What is Zone Two up to, you think?
So we're getting about how much per dwelling?
Nine.
Couple thousand?
One thousand three hundred and thirty-two.
So one thousand three hundred, so for every, so Zone Two, just so you know, in the city's impact fees, we have three zones. And Zone Two, which goes from the city limit, South La Mirage, and then right to that south border. So that's Zone, that's Zone, this is Zone Two. So any dwelling unit in Zone Two pays a thousand three hundred into the impact fee ordinance, so.
Dave, isn't it, I thought the line was to Access Road One.
No.
Okay.
No, Zone Two's just south of, just south of Cinnamon Shore North.
Okay.
And so Road B is the only project in Zone Two. So everything that we collect in Zone Two goes towards Beach Access Road B.
So this, so this project, based on what I'm understanding, would be under a million dollars, even if it included sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm proposing that we direct city staff to, I guess, move forward with a CFO bond.
Well, what I, I talked to Mark McClainy this afternoon, he's our, he's our, he's our bond agent, bond manager, whatever you want to call him. Yeah, he, he said the easiest thing to do for this would be for something that was in the seven hundred thousand range to
A million.
To a million, he said a seven-year tax note. He said if we had, you know, whatever we had yearly to pay down that debt out of the roadway impact fee, said, yeah, you could always do that, or you would adjust it with your, what your your INS rate. He thinks it's probably very doable. It takes, it takes twenty-five days, it's a one-reading ordinance. And then it takes about twenty-five days for you to get the funding. We would need a couple things, you know, we would need, the first step would be doom permitting. So you're going to have a doom permit that's going to run you about five grand, right?
Same.
Yeah, five grand, five grand for a doom permit. And then engineering's probably going to be anywhere from seventy to eighty thousand, ninety thousand. I'm not sure what engineering would be in that range, it'd be, you know, around the twelve percent range.
Can we, before you go with bond, can we get a cost estimate to do this, just?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, because it seems like, it seems like we're kind of like guessing, and we're probably guessing right, but just with how expensive everything's gotten construction-wise recently.
Yeah, the last estimate we did on this, I think, was probably about twenty sixteen or seventeen, and it was around six hundred thousand, but I can't remember.
That's like saying gas was thirty cents a gallon, you know, fifty years ago.
Yeah.
And it's just gone crazy since then. You know, steel's gone crazy, concrete's hard to get, so I think that it's going to be more expensive. I mean, those numbers we had in the past aren't even, even in the ballpark.
Oh, I think they'll be in the ballpark, but.
Well, that's what I'd like to find out.
That's why we said, that's why I said, you know, to, up to the million-dollar range. I went from five hundred thousand dollars five years ago, so I almost doubled it.
Sure, well, I mean, that may not be enough.
So what's, so, I mean, I'd like to, I think it's something we need to move forward on.
Well, I mean, you guys, if you guys wanted, you guys could direct me to, as soon as I could, bring back, I could circle back with Darla and Mark McClainy, see how long it would take them to get us the ordinance, and then get the cost estimate. And to have that ready. I don't, you know, possibly I could have that by the October meeting.
But that's something we can stop at any point along the way without any real.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you guys aren't technically, you're not committing to building to cash, I mean, even if you approve the, if you approve the ordinance, technically, you're not spending the money, I guess, until you award the contract.
But you're paying interest on that, and right now, I don't know, is it, and that's my next question, is, is the the impact fee growth enough to pay the interest on a seven-year note?
Probably.
We just did a.
Because, I mean, basically now you're just converting a.
We're also fixing to launch fairly quickly a new impact fee study, which will take into account the increased cost of roads, all of those things, so.
Sure.
My expectation is that that amount will go up.
But we need to look at, it's got eighty thousand dollars in there, or forty, what did you say, forty thousand? And you're looking.
Twenty-two of that is spent in this fiscal year.
Sure.
It's just now starting to develop.
On a seven-year note, you're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year, just in. Yeah, so just, just to cover the cost. So we're talking about how the huge impact fees, or there better be a heck of a lot of growth down the road, or heck of a lot of building, just to keep it out of the general fund, because that's who's going to pay for it otherwise. And that's.
I understand, but I think this, at this point, I mean, with the growth of the city.
I mean, I don't, I'm a hundred percent, a hundred percent I agree with you, I just think that it's always been, we're waiting for Region Two to pick up, to pay for it. And, and that's the thing, is as long as it can pay for it, because otherwise, you know, that's going to come down to like, well, do you want to pay for this road, or do you want to hire another police officer? And that's going to be an ugly decision that I think we need to make sure that we're making the right one.
Understood.
So really, all you're asking for is for information to find out.
Well, I mean, that depends, I mean, if you guys want me to bring back an ordinance ready for October or November, depending on when I can get it ready.
And that would include more accurate costs?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that, I mean, so, how would we need to word that?
I think you're going to direct them to go get a cost estimate and get, find out how much it's going to be and how about, you know, getting the bond or the tax or whatever. I think we should have some options for payment, you know.
The other, the other thing would be, the other idea would be that, you know, and we mentioned this at the Summers, Summer Goal Workshop, was, was that we, you know, are we going to bring a street and drainage bond to the citizens to vote on in May? Now, if that's still something that we want to do, then, you know, you could include this road in there. Now, the risk is that, you know, that goes to the voters. And, you know, so you're.
Well, I just think also, unless you're going to do a ten million dollar bond, there's a lot of road fixing needs.
Right, right. So Darla was saying that, that your bond's probably going to be a lot, you know, if you get a, let's say that, let's say we attempt a six or seven million dollar bond, street drainage bond, that's going to be more of a thirty-year, isn't it?
Right, but also look at it, we probably have six, seven million dollars worth of just street repairs alone, not including adding access road. And trust me, I am a hundred percent for this access road, because I've been pushing it since, that was one of the things that, when I got on council, that was something I was pushing for, and Dave said, there's no money, drop it. Didn't want to say it that way.
Yeah, well, yeah, because, you know, back then, we had no construction in Zone Two.
So.
You know, I mean, so I propose that we move forward in some way, shape, or form.
I think we should, absolutely, we should get some estimates. I would like to look at alternative funding, everything from a bond. I'm super sketchy about adding a lot of tax obligations, because that just comes out of general revenue. So, but, you know, that's something, and, and maybe there is another bond that we can do worth versus future growth on, on, on impact fees on two.
Well, then, how about for October, we bring the agenda item back, I get a good cost estimate and bring, bring back some, some, some alternative financial methods, so bring that back to you. So without the ordinance.
So I've motions that city staff go out and get, so I guess, concrete or more firm estimates and other funding options, and bring that in the October city council meeting.
Okay, and trust me, I said, I am a hundred percent for this, don't get, don't get me wrong, I just, I think we need to figure out how to pay for it.
So, that's, all right.
I'm, do we need a motion, or we just need to?
I guess I've.
He made a motion.
Okay, call the row.
Is that an action item, it's a discussion?
Yeah, just direct me, I'll do it.
So you don't, you don't even need a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item J. General discussion of possible land acquisition of Nuaces County property located at four thirty North Alister Street, Port Angeles, Texas, Nuaces County. Is that the lot that needs to be mowed all the time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they did.
Oh, my goodness.
So is the county, does it, does the county have it up for sale, or is it going to auction, what's their plan?
So about a month and a half ago, the mayor and the chamber, chamber CEO Brett, Brent, excuse me, put, sent a letter to Brent, Brent Chesney, requesting that they hold off on their sale. Because I think they've attempted it several times, and it's and it's never gone through, so I think it was off the table anyway, so we asked him to, to put a hold on it, which he, which he has done, we talked, actually, he was in, he was in Rick's office. Or, yeah, yesterday. So it's, it's, it's kind of, it's on hold, they're not attempting to sell it right now. He said he's fine waiting with city council directive. If you guys want to, you know, the process for the county and the city getting in a land deal together, both sides would, both sides would do a, do their own appraisal. And then we would, you know, haggle out a price in between those two appraisals. And then we would, you know, haggle out a price in between those two appraisals. And, um, and then each, you know, come up with a, you know, the city would, you know, kind of like with, with the softball field. You guys created like a little three person team, and we went negotiated with, with the church and came up with a price, brought that back to you guys. So that's kind of the process, is that, um, if that's something you guys are interested in.
Yes.
You know, you don't even need to vote on it, just give me a straw poll, and I'll, and I'll go, go back to the county and say this is something we're in, interested in, and then, um, work, work on getting an appraisal and start the process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. So, there you go. Yeah, okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll move forward with the county, and, um,
And just to clear, this is gonna be used with hot funds, not
Yeah, it's, it would be, it would be hot funds.
Well, just make sure everybody
Yeah, well, I, I, I take that back, you know, it's, 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 it's hot funds if it meets a, a hot fund project, for example, a type of, of, of
Well, can, so, so, why we're, why we're in negotiations, can we designate what it's gonna be, so we can use hot funds for that?
Yeah, you would have to, you would have to designate that, so in the next meeting or so, you guys would have a, a discussion on what kind of project you're looking at.
Need to happen today.
No, that doesn't need to
Well, but no, but you can, you can
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be some type of park or slash parking, you know, downtown parking.
Slash and park and
No, we, we need parking. The community center needs parking.
Needs parking, so it's gonna be parking, it's anything.
I mean, it's, 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 it's a big, it's, it's a really, it's, it's a big lot, I mean, if you envision if you envision some type of even like six or seven spaces there, and then maybe some spaces here.
Dave, that's a ditch. You just said, that's a ditch, I mean.
I know that's a ditch, but it, it's called RCP, reinforced concrete pipe. Um, you know, so, so there, there's a way to design this to where your whole interior is a really cool park feature. With, uh, you know, someone on an acoustic guitar sitting around, eating ice cream, I don't know, but but there's still plenty of, um,
You need to have a lot of parking though.
There's still plenty of room for parking, because we, we have, I mean, we, when we have events at the, at the community center, we use that. I mean, that's always been parking.
And we should look and see how much of it we use.
Yeah, you can do a really good combination facility to where all your uses, but that's something you guys have time to hash out. Yeah, exactly.
But you gotta bring some idea, or, you know, some options for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number, or item L.
No, I think we're in K.
K.
K, I'm sorry. Do you know discussion on permeable parking space requirements for commercial and residential development?
I know this has been brought up in the past, um, and really hasn't gone anywheres, but I think with the continued development of you know, here in town, we need to look at possibly an ordinance, uh, to require at least a percentage of parking spaces, uh, to be, have some kind of permeable surface.
Right.
And there are lots of options out there beyond just decomposed granite. Uh, I mean, there's some very nice options out there. So, I guess at this point, this is just, I guess, a discussion, and do you want to move forward with something like?
Right, we've talked a lot with Brick about it, and, you know, his, his suggestion is if you have to have more than two spaces, the others would be permeable, that sort of thing.
Yes, I mean, but, so is this something then, Dave, that we can then, since there seems to be some interest in it?
There is interest in it, on my part.
On the agenda as actually, uh,
I look at it, it, it's a great idea, until you have to go out and mow it every week, and then you're, you're
Well, you don't have to mow permeable necessarily. I mean, I have good examples.
Builds his new houses in his driveways, he has a little bit of concrete, and then he has some that's gravel.
So, I added a, I added a
It's right next to Whataburger, number one.
Sure.
I mean, and it looks good, and it
Well, good job, because I, I, I did permeable parking for a, uh, you know, we, we have that for Hurricane Harvey. And, um, first thing they told me was they had to build a retaining wall, because, and it was not crushed granite or whatever, I don't know. I don't remember what we used, some kind of ro- rocks, whatever, but you have to put, um, a retaining wall around it.
But there's other ways to do it, you don't have to use that.
That's an old picture, huh?
Yeah.
And I just saw a really nice one with turf grass, and I mean, with astroturf in there.
Seabreeze, yeah, seabreeze.
I sent you the picture that, on seabreeze, where they put the grass in between the squares of Looks good.
Right, and what astroturf, does that work?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think there's lots more options out there than there were even five years ago.
Right, and then that one picture that I took in Costa Rica, that was a big parking area, and they just had all these places in there.
All the spots for the oil and the cars dripped into.
No, no.
But fortunately, the cars weren't electric.
So, I mean, I, I think it's something that we should put on the agenda as, you know,
I, I've tried it, and like I said, city gave me a hard time.
I know, but there's something else, that's not the only way to do it.
I mean, are you guys looking at it like a, a percentage, or how, what are you guys thinking?
I don't know, that's what, something we'd have to probably think.
Right, I think certainly the idea, if you have more than two spaces and, and areas. Yeah.
But not as a, you don't want me to try, attempt to draft an ordinance?
Watch, do at least
Yeah, draft.
Draft something up and see what it's, you know.
Like to look at it before, before.
Kiffy's house there or something, and
The one on seabreeze.
Seabreeze, I mean, it's worth having.
And I mean, you know, we can probably get some other pictures, you know, of similar type projects around the state too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Item L. General discussion on short term rental parking requirements, that's council member part.
Probably that should actually say general discussion on parking in R two and above. Well, short term is R two and above. So, obviously, as we all know, there are continued to be parking issues in town, um, you know, you have you know, a three bedroom house, so you have, you know, two different family members, and they rent three golf carts, and, you know, before you know it, they're spilling out in the streets, and
Right.
Um, so, I think we need to look at an ordinance uh, or at least change our current ordinance to be more occupancy driven than by the number of sleeping areas.
Can we just kind of do that, though, by, by changing the requirement of parking space per bedroom and all that?
Well, I just, uh, I gave David, I
Before you get started, let me say that, uh, that's, this is all well and good, but you have to enforce it. And who, who's gonna do that? We have police that are shorthanded right now.
Right, well, I, I was just gonna mention that, that, that you, you guys directed staff to, to get this short term rental, uh, coalition, this group together, and I, and I have, they've, uh, virtually everybody, other than one more planning and zoning member that I need, all the others, uh, uh, have signed on. Um, but I, the, the, the letter I sent to them, just so you'll know, uh, actually, I haven't gotten it to you three, but basically, it, it says the goal is to develop some positive solution to observed STR problems, including but not limited to parking, occupancy, noise, and trash. So I, I, so we're gonna kick this off sometime, hopefully prior to the planning and zoning meeting this month.
Okay, so we're moving, so, right, yeah, so I'm okay with, with just striking this in, but then I want to see
Because if I, I've got you, Joel, and then, and the mayor as the council participants, correct?
And who you got?
All the, uh, all the, uh, planning and zoning right now, I've got Mike, Dan, and Craig Scott, so I was looking
He said he would.
Okay.
Well, he said he would.
They get, they get one parking space per
Uh, and then we've got, uh, the, the, the several, uh, property managers you mentioned. I mean, it's folk, uh, so we've got a couple of big ones, a medium and a small one, and they're all gonna participate, I think they'll
Well, I'm also gonna tell you that just, just for things, this would only affect, if we change it, it'd only affect new construction.
This is not affecting anything that's
It's always
Well, I'm saying, but it, but it's, it, it, so the same problem property is gonna be the same problem.
But they'll have ideas, and maybe those ideas can be fit back.
Yeah, so basically, it's simply, as you, you've, you've asked us to do this, so this group's gonna kick off, you guys are gonna participate, so that may be a good solution finding.
Alright, I'm agreeing with that, that's fine.
Yeah, at least we'll find out what they're thinking, and what might work, and what might not work, and then maybe we make it retroactive.
Okay. Let's see, where are we at? General discussion on remain, uh, renaming the city of Porter Annes Historical Old Town District established in August seventeen, uh, two thousand seventeen to the city of Porter Annes Old Town Preservation District and setting height and setback regulations.
Okay.
I'm ready. I just want to ask a couple of questions.
I got questions too.
Okay.
Why are we always trying to change these things in Old Town?
The name, you mean?
Well, yeah.
Here.
We, we need to get this over with, we have this all the time.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to do, is get it over with. It's, Dave read the two thousand six report from the historical people, and the, some of the recommendations was were from them, was to define a conservation district, and it would protect the is, is existing building stock. We can't really call it historical, because it has to be fifty percent, so, but they do still recommend to try to preserve some of our history and some of the buildings that are historical in there, so
And that's why, the name.
You've already put an overlay out, or, or
It's not, it's not really an overlay, but
About this all the time.
Well, because we never can get anywhere.
Well, we have to move with it, you know, we have to do something while there's still a chance. I know we should have, and now if we don't, then we'll never get it.
Tried in two thousand thirteen, and there was a lot of discussion on that, you were on P and Z, and it was, um, this was the P and Z, it said, Rick Pratt was there, he said, city council director Porter Annes Preservation Historical Association to begin the quest of Old Town Boundary by the first addressing the P and Z Commission. And they went back, and I think you looked at them too, from the twenties, thirties, and forties aerial photos, or photos of it to distinguish the area, correct? So they went through all that, and then finally in two thousand seventeen, right before Harvey, they did this resolution, so they could put the signs up and everything, but it didn't have anything else.
Right, it didn't have anything else, it was strictly
So, well, I'll take, I'm gonna say, because, uh, Rick Pratt got up here and said that he wanted you to be able to pick from four styles of buildings. Uh, material choices, wood, or, or old so, we'll, that's, but that's what he said, and, and once that got out, we had everybody with pitchforks up here saying that don't tell me how to build my house, don't tell me what color it can be, so that's why it died.
Right.
I understand, and I think
So maybe that shouldn't be done.
A little bit too far with those roof pitches and all that, but in here, it does distinguish the craftsmen style house, you know, and some other houses, and there are several houses, churches, tarping in.
Sure.
There's a lot of buildings that are still historical, and the reason we don't have fifty percent is because of the storms. I just would like to see an ordinance made, and maybe, did Rick and I, I'm Rick, you're not Rick, I'm sorry. Dave and I talked about it, and, and maybe we could do something with the height, and maybe the third story only half, you know, half pitched or something, or, you know, something like that. Distinguish that we're not gonna let any franchises into that area, store franchises.
We can't do that legally.
McDonald's, or
You can't, sure you can. If we call it district, we can.
Okay, well, everything, you can only control, you can only control their architectural style. You cannot say, hey, unless it's a, uh, a bar, uh, uh, like a topless or a, a smoke shop and has to be within certain distance of school, you can't prohibit a business. That is, that is state law.
State law.
So, I will say that, but I will say that, one of the things
I can't hear him.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Bruce.
So, so what they said was, unless it's a, like an adult business such as alcohol or
Okay.
thing, you can't prohibit it in an area, it's, it's a state law.
But, okay.
But, but you can do, you can say that you, you can't stop McDonald's, but you say McDonald's has to have a old style sign, or painted on the building, or whatever.
Like Dollar General should.
Well, probably, but here's, here's, so I'm gonna throw something out to you, just because it says, um, uh, setbacks. One of the things that makes Old Town, Old Town, is if you go to the theater, the old used to be the, the grocery store, which now it was Sumner City, and then became the, uh, ice cream shop.
Right.
And even, even the, um, Old Town thing, the things that make that feel like Old Town is it is a five or ten foot setback from the road, so when you drive by, you're driving by slow. By increasing setbacks, you make people drive by faster, so if you're in Moore Plaza, and you're, you know, a thousand or five hundred feet away from the target, you're gonna go forty miles an hour through the driveway, where you come up to those old buildings and you slow down under thirty, which is the speed limit there.
I just put that as an example.
Well, it's fine, I just, it just
We can do, but you know, if you go back to our focus statement, and you know, it says providing proportional balance between resort and community, contributing to the long term, so bigger, so fatal, so fatal. I'm not gonna say this. Too much popcorn. Our community remaining consistent with the qualities of life we value, there's, there's a lot of things in there that we we can't just keep
And, and I agree, I think what
To have some more for the community.
Sure. So, maybe a better way would be instead of a blanket ordinance where we make everybody mad, why don't we go after those buildings and encourage them to list themselves as historical buildings, like Tarpin has done.
Are, and also encourage people that build there to build according to some feature that, you know, that would fit in.
In a lot of cities
Like you'd like to be a part of Old Town.
You get something like that, they really wanna go in, and they really wanna do like
You might encourage them.
Yeah, encourage.
Yeah, sure.
Most of them won't listen, because they have something else.
But if they wanted to come to Old Town, because it's Old Town, maybe they would.
A, a lot of cities, it has happened, I mean, a lot of people like living in those areas, I mean, there's some people that have second homes in there that like it that way.
Old Town to me, uh, is, is not there anywhere.
Right, not Old Town, right, right.
When I was a kid.
Right. That was about twenty, thirty years ago, wasn't it?
So anyway, that's what I was looking at, I'd like to see an ordinance of that.
I mean, uh, go, go back to that picture real quick, they're just, just, so, um, this is kind of what I'm talking about. Okay, so, see how close is to, to the road, and it's obviously not Sumner City, that's a ice cream shop now.
Yes.
And I know they've done something to the theater, um, but bringing stuff up closer towards the road would actually give you more of an Old Town feel than saying, oh, well, it has to be seven feet shorter than all the other buildings, because that doesn't, that doesn't convey any kind of
Yeah, but you're talking about moving your buildings back.
Well, because, because the deal is now that the parking has been, become so onerous that, you know, any property you build about two thirds of it has to be parking.
Very nice, the way they did that.
And that one's, again, that's a, that's a twelve foot setback, it was supposed to be twenty, and by allowing you to put the parking on the backside, we agreed to let move that building eight forward.
On the backside, a good deal.
And I'll tell you that, everybody, I got so many calls on that saying, how in the heck could you let them do that? But now that it's there, everybody's like, oh, that looks beautiful.
Yeah.
So, it's like, they're gonna complain today.
No matter what.
And then, and then, a year later, they're gonna be like, wow, that's, that's really a good idea.
Anyway, I think the idea is, what can we do, let's not talk about what won't work, what might work.
Encouraging stuff like that closer to the road would give you more of an Old Town feel than increased setbacks or
Okay, take the increased setbacks out.
Well, I say, I, I think what, what Joel and Hip was discussing was more residential. So, and I, and she had mentioned, like, if you, if you want a three story product in the Old Town area, then maybe the concession is, is that your third story only gets to be fifty percent of your second and first stories, so that you get a building that has some architectural breaks in it, and it's not just a big three story block. When, when you drive around from, you know, this, and I'll just say, the area bounded by cutoff and G. And if you throw out, um, Twelfth Street and Lantana, and Channel View in that area down there. And you, you could go around and count the three story homes on two hands, there's just not many. In this area right in here, you know, from cutoff over to IGA to, you know, you know, from cutoff over to IGA to, you know, down Avenue A, there's only a handful of three story homes. But those, those three story homes all have a third floor that's, that's a fifty percent reduced footprint of what, um, of what the second and first floor is. So, so you get kind of a good architectural uh, break, for example, like this one here on, um, on, uh, on Avenue A. Let me just pull it up real quick. So there's a couple of these, you know, like that there, that has a, that, that, the massing on that third floor is about fifty percent of the, um, of the second floor. And then when you come down a little bit further, see, see, see when you look around, look at that, that's, there's hardly any three story product anywhere.
And so when you, when you get a third story and somebody's got a nice two story to pull and then they build, build this giant thing and then you're, they're just looking down on you.
Can I ask you a question?
So the, so the idea would be, um, and here's another, here's another good example here, this third story and you can see it right off to the left. It has a re, it has a reduced, that, that third story is about fifty percent of the, of the one below it. So, the idea would be, um, if you go three stories, then perhaps you have a, and you, you have, you have an additional side yard setback if you, if you want to go three story. So instead of a five foot, maybe it's a ten foot.
Well, I guess my, my things, my concern is if you go basically to Station and Beach Street, right behind there is a three story condominium that someone put in there by basically putting a flat roof. And so.
Station and Beach?
Yeah, Station and Beach. It's actually the, um, the road. Is it?
Right there by Stingray's?
Yeah, right by Stingray's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, that, that condo.
Got that in there because it has a flat roof and it seems like what you can do is you're still gonna get three stories, but you're gonna get a three story building with the flat roof to meet these. So I guess the question is, can you say, can you just limit to these have to be one story? But I also see a lot of those that are right there.
Go to twenty seven feet and by the time they get to the mid feet.
I'm sorry, four stories, yes. It is four stories. And I forgot that they live on the ground.
But that was the, that was what Joelle and I had talked about was, was the reduced setback. It didn't have to do with the commercial frontage. It had to do with a residential building, like, you know, like.
It's just they recommend to try to preserve, we have, you know, every city has an area that they call Old Town or, or King Williams area or whatever.
Cowtown or.
Yeah, the village or whatever you wanna call it. Every, every place has it and, and people are attracted to it. So, I mean, and it's.
And we have a lot.
It's our history.
A lot of history here. A lot of history. A lot of history here. It's just getting lost.
Finally, finally get an ordinance made for it.
So, I think if you, if you, if you target it to, and this will tell you, when we were doing our master plan, this first thing our, our guy said, he goes, if you try to do the whole apple, you're gonna have everybody think, but if you take a bite out and say, we're just gonna do R one or we're gonna do R two, you start narrowing and it becomes more palatable.
We've already taken a little bitty bite three years ago and that was about it, size.
Why? But again, I think that was what they had in mind was not what, what the people were ready for. And I know I wasn't ready for it.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we direct city staff to come up with a reasonable height and setback ordinance.
This is gonna take a while.
Okay.
And, and I'm gonna say it targeted at R one and R two.
Talk some more too about it, maybe.
Yeah, I think, um.
What, P and Z, maybe, I don't know. I mean.
I mean, is that something that would fit into that work group?
We can.
No.
I think. Probably a separate, it's a separate group. I don't know that you guys, can you, can you brand the general discussion? It wasn't.
Just not an action.
Yeah, it wasn't, that's what I've got, um.
I mean, I don't think there's anything to move forward to yet because I'm not even sure we agree on the same.
That's just you.
That's just.
It has been in the, it's been in the.
Right, it has been the thing and it's been, it's been.
There's so much.
It's like, it was like, it was like the, um, it was like the sports complex. It, it went forward, it got, because of hurricane, it got pulled off. It went to the voters, it got rejected. It's a dead deal for right now. I'm sure. It's still, it's still in the vision statement for Porter Anzus and at sometime, some point in the future, that'll probably happen, but as of right now, it's a dead issue.
Well, I, and, and obviously it's, it sounds like there's a sense of urgency. Just let me tell you what is happening though.
There's four of us here that like.
And I showed, I showed David today, so I'm, I'm, I'm just about finished with the, the working document that will go to P and Z. Again, you directed us to kick off the, uh, the comp planning. And so that document, which has one of the specific components of that is, is Old Town, preservation of Old Town. I know that, that's probably still not as far away as it was, but, you know, a few months off. But part of the idea behind the comprehensive plan is that, the hope is, is that both you and planning and zoning will head up certain topic areas. It will be done on a topic basis, parks, thoroughfare plans, Old Town. That's gonna be an ideal venue because there'll be significant public input. Um, but I'm just throwing that out there. That's, that's part of the comp plan that I, that I'm, I'm processed right now. So I just throw that out there.
It's a dead issue to Bruce, but it's not a dead issue.
No, it's not a dead issue. It's just it, I mean, I, I already told you, I think that like includes part of Avenue G and I don't think there's anything on Avenue G that is historic or Old Town. So, I would like to see that. I'm sorry?
Like on F and.
Yeah, I think, I think if it starts at, if it, if it, instead of the south border being Avenue G, if it's Avenue F, I agree. That, that's probably where it needs to end.
Why did we pick G? Was there something trying to be put in there?
I think it might have been rock cottages, but the hurricane took that out. But I think it was just, it was just a big thoroughfare. I think so.
So that's gone. So we don't have to have G. We could change it to Station C.
Down twelfth street.
Yeah, I mean, that, 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 I mean.
I don't think there's.
That is, that is a big, that is a working group product. That's nothing, that's something that just doesn't come out of staff.
Right.
And so next month, like Rick said, at the, well, no, this month, P and Z is kicking off. They're gonna start developing groups and citizen work groups. So they're, they're gonna, here, here's the problem. You're stretching staff way too thin.
Right.
You can't have a cop plan. STR Working Group, Old Town Working Group. It's like, we gotta stay focused on the cop plan, let things fall where they fall and stay the course. We're getting pulled, you're, you're ripping stuff out of the cop plan and saying, go do this right now. And we're like, hey, the, it, it, it is a process. A cop plan is, i- it is a very detailed, we have to hire outside consultants. We are gonna be working our drainage impact fee study into this. We are gonna be creating citizen groups with council. One of those groups is the Old Town Preservation Group. My, my advice is to stay the course, let things fall in place and don't get in a hurry and try to rip things out of the, that need to be in the cop plan and bring them to the forefront because I think you're, it, it's, it's, it's bad, it's bad process.
Plus, plus y'all are here for six years, whether you wanna be or not. No one ever gets, no one ever gets kicked off once you're here. It's like you're chained to the.
We, we have so much work coming at us in the next twelve months. Our heads are gonna be spinning.
With the cop plan.
Yes. Yeah, it is, it is a massive undertaking and this stuff, this very important stuff, it is in there. It, it, it has a, a time slot, it's gonna get addressed, it's gonna have citizens working on it. It's gonna be a working group of P and Z citizens, council. So, I mean, it is in there. It's not gonna get neglected. I just need you to be a little bit more patient and let it take its course and it will come to fruition eventually.
Okay, well, let's move on.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to end. Presentation, general discussion for Brodus and Associates on Hurricane Harvey recovery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are y'all? Hope you're doing well. Hey, we got some good news though. We got good things going on.
Oh, that's good.
Community park concession stands about forty percent complete with the renovation. Skate park's probably roughly eighty percent. Uh, we should have those completed in December. Uh, the nature preserve, we submitted sixty percent plans for phase one of the boardwalk system. That way FEMA can start their biological assessment. Wonderful people to work with. Uh, we rebid the Charlie's pasture, uh, bulkhead project. Again, today we should open bids. I think it advertised first time today. We will bid seventh of October. Three weeks away, we'll have the gas distribution system plans ready to go. But supposedly on the twenty seventh, I was assured today that we'll have the first test piles to drive for Charlie's pasture pier and Roberts Point. And there we open bids on Council Brundret Pier. I got it right again. And the drainage project. So we got a lot of things happening, a lot of things going on. We've got a meeting I think coming this next week with FEMA upper leadership to try to get things out of like, the chief would be happy to hear this, uh, the public safety building, the fire station, a couple of other things out of their CRC, which is that cost and resource center. So hopefully we'll have some good news, probably a week after that.
Are you hopeful? Are you positive thinking?
Ma'am.
Are you positive? Are you hoping?
Oh, I am, I'm hopeful. I think we, we stirred enough, uh, fires under.
Okay.
Poke that barrel a little bit.
Yeah, we, we, yep, we, we have.
How about the pavilion down on Roberts Point?
The large pavilion is in an appeal with FEMA, we are appealing it. We tried to get a replacement. They didn't want a replacement. So then we had them reevaluate the structure. They went back out there and denied some work that we've already had completed. So, but it's going into an appeal process.
So, the ba, the backup plan is, is we take, i- i- is when we build the EDA, which is not FEMA, that's that separate five million dollar grant we got from the feds, when we go out to bid for the, uh, new harbor master office, you, you guys might wanna pull the trigger on taking about three to four hundred K of hot tax money and, and doing a, doing a city, city owned pavilion renovation. Cause there's a good chance that FEMA's, there's a good chance that FEMA is just gonna say that corrosion is thirty years old and we're not giving you nothing.
Why don't we just do that?
Why don't we just do that?
Well, because we have a little time before the EDA harbor masters is completed and ready to go out to bid. So. Oh, did we, we, we put it in the budget? Right, okay, good. So we have the money in the budget. It's just gonna, we're gonna go down this FEMA course for a little bit longer, but when we're getting this pavilion or getting the harbor master office ready, we're gonna run that as on a sidetrack and you guys are just gonna have to make a decision to just pull out of the FEMA.
We're still, we're still gonna have some funds allowable on that project.
Just not much.
I can't tell you how much, maybe sixty, seventy grand, but.
Why do they deny some of the work that's already been completed? Cause that, doesn't make sense. That's confusing. You're talking about federal government.
But they went back and reevaluated.
Okay.
And then they said, well, we think this is a maintenance issue and that's a maintenance issue. So that's, that's what we're fighting. Hey, you've already approved this and we showed them where it was maintenance, not maintenance issues, but where it was Hurricane Harvey issues, like the electrical, it all went on the water. So you gotta replace it and they pull that back out. So.
So Dave.
Happy unless they.
Yeah. So can we have it where i- instead of like pulling out the FEMA project, we keep hammering them and keep sending them and fighting and appealing, but we just use our own money and if we win, we get the money back?
Yeah, what we'll do is turn it into an improved project. So then it'll be a cap project to get your funds that were actual Hurricane Harvey losses.
It seems like that, you know, we, we win either way, that we get our, we get our pavilion fixed and it's either hot tax or it's FEMA money, but we know it's, it's not coming out of city budget.
Right. Well, some of it's gonna come out of that hot tax money because they, they hadn't allowed enough money to rebuild the thing.
Right.
Sure.
Any other questions? Blob is giving us trouble.
Sir?
The blob is giving us trouble.
So, uh, just, just a general question. I know with all, all the, uh, stuff that's going on in Louisiana, you know, pray for them, uh, has that pulled away any of our FEMA people or put us in the thing? Are we dealing with different groups of people now?
They were all on the call. Every one of them were, so.
All good.
Good.
So that's a plus. And then we're gonna, you know, we'll kind of figure out more things if we get this.
Yeah, we don't know how Ida's gonna, it, it, it either might light a fire under FEMA and say, hey, we gotta get Texas finished. So we can jump over to Ida or the, or they drag us down more. Uh, we, we don't know yet.
Well, that's, that's kind of where I was heading with that question.
I think they're gonna try to get this finished.
Good.
From just from past experience.
I hope so.
I've got my fingers crossed.
Me too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? You bet. Hey, y'all need anything, y'all wanna warm out?
Thanks for the job you guys do.
Yep. You've got the good work.
Okay, let's see here.
Oh.
Oh, is the resolution nominated, uh, represented to place six on the New Hayses County appraisal district to represent the city of Porter Anzus, directing the city secretary to follow up, forward a copy of the resolution to Ronnie Canales, Chief Appraiser, on and before September thirty, twenty twenty one and providing other matters relating to said appointment. Has anybody volunteered for that?
No, so Mayor, so typ- typically, um, the, the city, this is kind of a, a point system. We usually team up with, um, Flower Bluff in the Porter Anzus Independent School District because they, those two entities have a, have a pretty large voting block, you know, it's by points. We're the smallest of the three. So usually we defer to the Porter Anzus Independent School District and Flower Bluff to kind of come up with a candidate and then we throw our votes at them. So I called Sharon McKinney. They do not have anyone at this time. And I talked to the superintendent in Flower Bluff. They're hoping to have someone in a couple of weeks. So although.
September thirty.
The September thirtieth is the deadline. They're, they have a meeting on the twenty ninth.
Okay.
Um, so if they, if they choose someone, they'll contact us and say, hey, this is our person, please vote for them. So, the vote doesn't take place until October first.
Let's don't break tradition.
Yeah.
Well, as I say, that's, so would we make a motion to just approve?
Yeah.
Approve whoever, uh, Flower Bluff nominates. I make a motion to approve whoever Flower Bluff nominates.
Second.
And should we say Flower Bluff and are the Porter Anzus School District?
Well, for instance, they're not, they're not offering a candidate, only Flower Bluff is.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, call roll.
Hamilton Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Kruger?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Me, Avia.
Yes. Hey, item, uh, number, or item P is a resolution commending, amending the city's personnel policy and implement the requirements Senate Bill thirteen fifty nine and Amendment Section six one four oh one five Local Government Code establishing a mental health leave policy for a city of Porter Anzus Police Office providing a servability clause and establishing an effective.
I gotta.
If y'all been following the legislation, um, throughout the year, there were a lot of bills presented as a result of the George Floyd and Sanderland incidents over the years. Uh, most of them are directing police departments to create new policies. Uh, unfortunately, we're, we're way ahead of the curves. We don't have to create a lot of policies. But this one came out and it's not just a policy, it's actually creating a new benefit. So it's not something we can do internally. And what it directs that is, is a police officer and the force of their duties and only applies to police officers right now uh, is exposed to a traumatic event that requires, um, mental health care that the city have in place a policy that allows them to do that without hitting their vacation funds or sick leave or, or anything else. It provided no guidance at all and how many, or how few hours, how many hours, how few hours? So I, uh.
You picked twenty four, correct?
I picked twenty four.
Now, I just, just in this kind of thing, um, we kind of already, I'm assuming that you already have some type of policy where, I mean, we don't have a lot of traumatic events in Porter Anzus, but when we do, the officer can already come to you. I guess it would count against his time off though, correct? Or would you, we call administrative leave?
Yeah, well, um, generally, I mean, the city's got a very generous sick leave policy for, for its employees. And we've, we generally utilize that if, if there's a need uh, or we'll, we'll work some kind of a flex schedule and we picked the twenty four hours because it's consistent with the, the bereavement leave. It's, it's three eight hour shifts, even though we don't typically work an eight hour shift, but that's, that's where that comes from, it's three, three, eight hours.
And I'm assuming that if, if say it was a. And I'm assuming that if, if say it was a major traumatic event and the officer needed more than twenty four hours, we would.
Well, with my thought processes, and you can add, I mean, you can make this.
I'm trying, I'm just, just trying to get a clarification that if, say it's a traumatic event and the officer, you know.
Say the officer shoots someone.
Well, you get, that would be.
That's a traumatic event.
Yeah.
Is it?
And it's geared more towards, and that, that's one of these, but they work at a fiery death with, with children getting burned up in a car wreck, right?
Yeah.
And it creates a, and, and, and of course his business, you know, PTSD is cumulative and can build up over years.
Right.
But this will give us an opportunity to, to have the officer on the city dime, go get evaluated. Seek a treatment plan, if there needs to be a treatment plan, if there needs to be a treatment plan, the doctor's gonna prescribe a treatment plan. Which will trigger workers comp, it'll trigger.
Well, that was my next question. They do have to go see a doctor to take care of this.
Give us an opportunity to give them a day or two off until we can get them in front of a, of a, of a mental health professional to do that initial evaluation and to come up with, with the treatment plan.
I can give you a good mental health person. I use her.
Sure. It's not Sherry, is it?
She's, she creates the need.
No, my, my, I guess my question is though, is if they get twenty four hours off, that is to go see a doctor, not just to say, hey, I had a traumatic event, I want, you know, sit home and on the couch and.
And, and I, and that's, there, there is no guidance. So the policy that we put in front of you, we just kind of pulled out of thin air. We, um, Fran gave me some, some sample policies that, that other cities and counties were using. I kind of pulled pieces out of that. But ultimately the goal is to get them in front of them, of a mental health evaluator.
Sure.
And if, if they need to take a day off before they do that, but before this is over with, I want them in front of somebody to say.
Fine.
Back to work or you need.
That was my question, like, you know, my work policy is if you, if you are sick, you know, you get a note from doctor before we'd let you come back to work. So you're not gonna infect everybody and it's kind of the same thing, you don't want to come back. And so that was just my question.
Okay.
And you know, it's always reviewable, so if it doesn't work or it's abuse or not flexible enough, next year you can change it.
I can't think of, you know, I don't want to jinx it too much, but in twelve years I've been here, I can't think of a single one since. So.
Our, our motion to approve.
I'll second.
All roll.
Yes. Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Mabreton Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mabreion?
Yes. Q is a resolution adopting an amendment. The twenty twenty fee schedule asked amended March eighteen, twenty twenty one. By amending library fees and adding non-Texas resident fees. Adding late fee provisions for Harbor, increasing the rate for sanitation services and providing for severance and setting an effective date. Go for it.
So we have, um, everything that we're requesting changes in the fee schedule, we highlighted in yellow. And under the library, um, we've always charged ten dollars per card. If you don't live within the city of Port Aransas, but we do have a, a library share program with the South Texas Library System. And to participate in that share program, we cannot charge any Texas resident for a library card. So this would make, if you're a non-Texas resident, such as a winner Texan, they would still have to pay the ten dollar fee. Under the harbor, we do charge five percent, um, for anything that is late, later than thirty days, but we are just requesting instead of just on any amount, if it's ten dollars, we charge a five percent fee. The harbor master requested, and we've had a few of the other, um, tenants request anything over a hundred dollars then gets charged that balance. They could carry a hundred dollars for thirty days. And the sanitation increase was discussed at the budget workshop. And that is in line with what we budgeted.
Okay, so I just a quick question, I don't think, um, why don't we do a incremental, like if, if the budget's outstanding for sixty days, it's ten percent and, or it keeps compounding?
It's very hard to do administratively.
Sure.
With our software.
Got it. Okay.
Anything else on that one?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All roll.
Mabreton Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mabreion?
Yes. Item, uh, S or R, the resolution awarding bid for independent auditing services for the audit. For years ending September thirty, twenty one to September thirty, twenty three. Authorizing the option to extend the agreement for two additional one-year periods and authorizing city manager to sign uh, contract documents related to send bid award.
Which one's Mr. Bowtie?
None.
Yeah, he did not.
He did not, he did not send in Pernarv key. We've had him a long time.
And he's tired of us.
I think he's tired of us, I think we're tired of him. Um, I think our, our.
The guy that looks like.
Mr. Bowtie, absolutely.
Yes, I think, and I think he, um, he is also getting older, he's a rancher, uh, you know, kind of a one person firm for writing up the report. So we went out, right, it, we'd been with him for gosh, about at least ten years.
Yes.
So it was time to definitely go out for another RFQ. So we did that, we received six responses. I reviewed them, but did not have time to get everything reviewed before, um, the packet was put together. I am recommending going with Park Fowler and Company, which was the lowest, um, lowest bid, basically, it's not really a bid, but.
Right, cause in this instance, this is professional services.
Right, you do not have to choose the lowest bid, but I think they would meet our needs.
My next question, so was the second or third lowest bids, did they offer anything that would justify their additional cost?
Really, the ABIP may have done more, um, single audits that they put in their, their bid. But, um, I don't think their office was necessarily local, if I remember, I didn't bring them in here with me. You know, Park Fowler is in Corpus.
And you pretty much, you're, you're preparing everything, you're just giving them to look over the books, sign off on it and send it back to you, is that correct?
Right, an audit is, there are financial statements, they audit them to make sure that they're materially.
Correct.
You know, there are.
You're doing most of the work and they're just reviewing.
You do a lot of the work, um,
So.
You know, the notes and everything like that, there's, is definitely, there's, they, we do not do the conversions to the Gatsby thirty four. I did that at South Padre and it's, it's a lot of work. So that's just my recommendation is to go ahead with Park Fowler. It's a three-year contract with an additional two-year optional renewal. Of course, since it's professional services, anytime if we're not satisfied, we can discontinue the contract.
Air motion.
Motion to approve, I'm sorry, go for it. Oh, I motion to approve. I'll second for Park Fowler.
All roll.
Councilmember Kruger?
Yes.
Mabreton Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Mabreion?
Yes. S is an ardent, first and only reading, amending various fund accounts in twenty and twenty one budget. To reflect changes due to increase in revenue and our expenses. Authorized by the Home Rule Charter. Even all prior ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective.
So every year, at the end of the year, we have to make some amendments to the budget. As we go through the year and you approve different contracts, um, we always state budget amendment if needed is approved. So this is the, um, if we want to discuss any of these, we definitely can. I wanted to point out in the general fund, since we had such a good year, um, sales tax. We don't have our final month in yet. We, we don't get that actually till October from the month of September. And it will be an accrual, but we're, we're saying to increase that five hundred thousand dollars, we'll probably even come in above that. Um, building permits, definitely, there was an increase in that pool and a hundred and thirty thousand extra in short-term rental registration that was not anticipated, so nine hundred ninety-five thousand additional income. So if you remember, we approved to go ahead and do the radio system in a quicker format than we were planning originally, not financing it out. So two hundred and seventy-five thousand is going to that. And I've proposed an additional transfer for street maintenance of three hundred thousand to the street maintenance fund and two hundred ninety-five five to go towards hurricane recovery matches, hurricane Harvey recovery matches that will be needed in the future for some of our projects. So I just kind of wanted to point out the general fund, cause that's the.
So you're giving us T.
Giving us the extra money and now she's spending the extra.
Well, not really spending it, it's going over and it's gonna be sitting there in those funds in reserve for future projects.
Sure. I got a question just on the airport fund. It says increased fuel sales is twenty-five thousand, but aviation fu- fuel for expenses, thirty thousand. Are we losing money on our aviation fuel?
No, we're not, um.
Now, we get about.
We get almost between seventy-five to a dollar.
Because there's a five thousand dollar discrepancy there and, and it seems like that should be a moneymaker, not a revenue.
But you had to remember that at September thirtieth, we'll have fuel sitting there in that tank. And so I wanted to, um, make sure that we had enough to make sure we had enough fuel at September thirtieth. If he does another purchase at the end of the year.
Okay.
And so.
Our profit sitting in the.
Yeah, there you go.
And that's all you had to say.
Yeah, and it's a ten thousand gallon tank.
No, I understand, so it's, thanks, I just was curious there.
Yeah, we, we still definitely have more in fuel revenue than we do in fuel expenditures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that everything? There's more in it.
All roll.
Mabreton Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kruger?
Yes. Yes.
Mabreion?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Okay. Staff reports. Accounting and finance, Darla.
Just moved on up here. You have the written report in your packet, um, economic indicators that I wanted to point out, as we've all known, what a, a huge summer this was compared to anything else. Our hotel motel tax for the month of July was up, um, about fifty percent.
What page are you on in your package, sorry?
Um, two hundred and twelve of two twenty.
Thank you. I couldn't find it either.
About forty-nine point nine six percent compared to last year. Um, now we did have a lien and judgment that was paid for about seventy-five thousand in that number. You know, sometimes there's some things that have a lag that people get behind, but compared to what we actually collected in two thousand twenty compared to twenty-one was at forty-nine point nine six percent. So we're at sixty-five percent for the first eleven months of the year. Sales tax also, um, for that same period was doing very well. Of course, that money goes to the state first and then comes back to us. It was up thirty-six percent for the month. And so we're up almost thirty-two percent for the first eleven months of the year. And it's really, when you have the months that are, are so large, you know, usually our, our increases are not
thirty percent.
Very big, the percentage wise, you really have to have a lot of cash come in to make those percentages fluctuate that much.
I think that's that Sunday night through Wednesday night occupancy that a lot of times we, we don't see in previous summers and you compound that with the sales tax from those four days and in the crowds, so.
Well, you're also, we're also just the parking permits, I know we're looking ahead, you know, we basically made our month at the end of July compared to last year, so we're like almost six months ahead of where we were last year at parking permits.
Correct, we're up, um.
Granted, I know the sales starts drop off like a cliff here pretty quick, but it's still, it's still, it's a nice, it's a nice, uh, you know.
Same thing for our golf cart, we've already surpassed where we were for last year.
Parking permits on the beach.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You know, we got a guy down there that doesn't let them get away.
No, same, but, but, but I mean, that's saying, I, but, but just the fact is that people are actually buying them. People are buying them, you know, we basically, what we did in July, we did all of last year.
Twenty-nine thousand in July.
And we are still waiting to hear from Corpus on our meeting, so.
Oh, yeah.
We've contacted them, we're waiting to hear back.
Give them a deadline that tell them we're gonna go, we're gonna go solo if they don't, if they don't meet us. I think it will. I think that, we're not talking a little bit of money here. So.
So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address.
Thank you, Darla.
Good job, man.
Thank you. Police, Scott Burrows.
Lights out.
Hey, they have a generator here, it takes about five minutes to kick on, but we'll get lights again.
We don't know if it works, so.
So our summer was kind of like the UT offense, pretty uneventful. Luckily, I've got my Aggie friends that have been very supportive this week, so.
What happened, they joined SEC?
Um, not.
Not yet.
Trying to, but yeah, anyway, go on, sorry.
That's.
My wife's a long horse.
Hey, we, we do have a losing record against one team in the SEC. So, um, not a lot of major incidents, we're, we're running steady. The, the best news I've got is, um, we made three job offers today. Got some very talented people lined up, uh, one of former officer that.
How'd you find them?
Well, it helps to have a competitive pay scale. We got, one of them was, was a former officer who's gonna come back, Alan Graham, I don't know if you remember him or not. And, uh, he left to go in the private sector and discovered that in the private sector, you actually have to produce, so he's he's coming back as a, he was, he was a very top-notch officer. And then we hired a, a twenty-year veteran out of the Austin Police Department who was tired of dealing with, with the Austin stuff. He's gonna be, we actually gave him an extension on one of the positions that'll be approved in April, so he's not coming right away. He's gonna be next, next spring. And then we hired a young lady out of the Kingsville Police Department today who's a six-year veteran.
So these, they have all accepted these positions?
They've all accepted these positions, we, we, they're all conditional offers still, we have to go through, through our background checks.
Right, but I mean, as long as everything falls in place.
You told me you had three at one time that you needed to fill on that.
So we had, we had six that we needed to fill and we, we've got, um, we've got a couple other from previous month that we're still finishing up backgrounds on, so we're sitting right now, including the two positions we have in April, we have one vacancy, so we've got.
Fantastic.
We appreciate y'all's support, but it helps a lot when we can, we can be very competitive with, with these other markets and, and bring in some, some talent, so. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the job.
Yeah.
Doing, chief.
Yep. Keep up the good work, sir.
And you're supposed to tell us about the party we're having us.
About what?
And I am.
Yeah.
Got a hundred and three beach parties finally.
You got a man out there doing it full-time, that helps.
Hundred and forty-three.
That's great.
For a part-time.
Yeah. Can't believe my phone hadn't been ringing off the hook.
That guy's busy.
Yeah. The fifth of October, second, second Tuesday, or first Tuesday. Um, in October, we have our national night out. We, we reached out to the neighborhoods again this year and see if they wanted to go back to doing individual neighborhood parties and we've decided we're gonna do a citywide party again at the, at the pavilion. Uh, we'll kick off about five o'clock with, with hamburgers and hot dogs and cokes.
What night is that, chief?
Uh, the first Tuesday, the, the fifth.
Fifth of October?
Yeah. We'll have, uh, T M L. We'll have your, your first responders will be there and the entire city, of course, is invited for a, for a very laid back, yeah, evening. We've had real good attendance the last couple of years. I'm looking forward to another productive year. Thank you, Ms. Holt, I appreciate the.
Yeah.
Reminder, I'm getting old.
I like the guy you have on the beach, he, I listen to him a lot. He, he, he always says the same thing, he says, mark a thirty and then the dispatcher comes on and he says, parking. And then, uh, a few minutes later, he says, mark a thirty, excited.
That gets you excited, huh? Well, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, chief. Okay, city council comments?
Think we made a lot already tonight.
Okay. Hearing none, we are a.